All right, good evening, everybody. We will start the committee of the whole for the City of Belvidere meeting of April 11th, 2022. The clerk will call the roll, please.
Brereton.
Here.
Flurry.
Here.
Frank.
Here.
Freeman.
Here.
McGee.
Here.
Mahal.
Here.
Porter.
Here.
Prather.
Here.
Snow.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Ten present.
Okay, thank you. We have nobody registered for public comment this evening. We do have a public forum tonight. We have Skanel Properties with General Mills here this evening, representatives for a presentation. And I'm going to announce the individuals on the list in front of me. And if I miss anybody, feel free to correct me. We have from General Mills, Tom Hogan, Director, Global Real Estate and Facilities, General Mills out of Minneapolis, Minnesota. We have Jordan Wigell, Senior Manager, Global Real Estate, Minneapolis. We have for Skanel Properties, Bill Linville, Managing Director, Skanel Properties, Chicago. We have Dan Harrington, Development Manager, Skanel Properties, Indianapolis. We have Chris Carlino, Senior Development Associate, Skanel Properties, Chicago. And for Design and Entitlements, we have Nancy Hagerty, partner with Michael Best and Friedrich LLP. We have Adam Arts, Principal Pinnacle Engineering Group, Mark Molinaro, Principal Partners and Design Architects, and Lauren Kolek, Architect, Partner and Design Architects as well. So, thank you, everybody, for coming. Appreciate it. And whoever wants to come up, yes, sir?
Get started, yeah.
Sure.
We've got a couple people, most of the team, but not everybody.
Okay, all right.
Didn't want to fill the whole room back there.
Yeah.
Try to stay out of the way of that there. I don't want to stand in front of you here.
No, you're fine.
Oh, you're fine.
All right. First things first, just wanted to thank everybody for having us out tonight. Brought a small army. Fortunately, not our whole team could make it, but I'm sure you'll meet them in due time. And thank you again for, this has been a process. It's been the better part of a year, as many of you are aware. Gina and Mayor and Attorney General have been great throughout the process, been very patient with us. We appreciate your time and everybody else's time here, so thank you for that. I just wanted to give us a quick introduction, let you know what we're going to be talking about tonight. And then we'll bring some of our other partners up and run through some General Mills specifics and then some Skanel specifics and also some Design and Entitlement specifics. So, a quick overview. What we're proposing is a warehouse and distribution facility. The General Mills team has selected Skanel Properties to be the developer for this development. You'll hear a little bit from Tom on General Mills and what they're planning to bring to the table from building standpoint jobs and those sorts of things. Skanel Properties is honored to work with such a good client. We have experience with them and fast, we're just wrapping up another project with them in southeast Wisconsin. So, we have some good experience with their real estate team, with their process and how to make sure this goes as smoothly as possible for tenants, ownership, landowners, the city, for everybody. And here. Quick agenda, we'll go through the team introductions. Mayor, help us with that. We have some of our team here, but I'll kind of run you through again who's here, who's going to be talking, what we're going to be talking about. Tom will get up and give you an overview on General Mills, General Mills Belvidere, and General Mills process as a whole. We'll run through that. I'll give you a little bit of the same on Skanel Properties, what we do, what our plans are, how we want to go through. We have Nancy and Adam here from, Nancy's our attorney, local counsel, and Adam's our engineer, both partners that we've worked with over the years. And they'll run through some more development details, annexation, rezoning, some of those processes, some of the design processes, how we're looking now. And then we'll open it up. I'm not sure if we are having open discussion at the end or not, but we're here to answer questions if you guys have anything that might come up throughout the presentation. So, again, I don't need to go too much into the team. Kind of ran through this already. Tom is here. You'll be hearing from Tom on a couple slides here coming up. Director of Global Real Estate and Facilities for General Mills is house out of Minneapolis. You can find him all over the country these days, it seems. Jordan is not here. Some of you will be meeting Jordan on Thursday at our Boone County meeting. From Skanel Properties, Bill Linville, Managing Director and Partner with Skanel Properties. He is here today with us. Be sure to ask him the hard questions. He's going to have all the answers for you. Dan Harrington's here as well, Development Manager, House out of Indianapolis. And then Chris, Design and Entitlements, Nancy is here. She's, like I said, our local counsel. Adam's here as well, our civil engineer, both out of Milwaukee. And then Mark and Lauren could not make it. They'll be here likely at our next couple of meetings. That's going to get us into our General Mills slides, so I'll scroll through this for you, Tom.
Sure. And the mic's ready to turn on, so you're good to go.
There you go. Thank you. Mayor, council members, staff, thank you very much for having us tonight. Appreciate it. You obviously know who General Mills is if you've lived in this town for many years. You know, we've had a presence here for over 20 years. And I thought, tonight, I'd just go through a few slides, kind of talking a little bit about General Mills as a whole. I'll talk a little bit more about, and a few other slides, about our Belvidere plant and our employees there. And found actually some, discovered some very interesting things about the plant site there, talking to our plant personnel. Then we'll walk you through why, you know, what this building is going to do for General Mills, what the purpose of the building is. And there's a little detail there I think you guys should know that is very important. Then I'll turn it back over to Chris and the team to get into a little more detail on the site. So, as you know, General Mills are one of the, we're the sixth largest food company in the world, based out of Minneapolis, which is where I'm, where I come in from. I'm actually a Chicago native, so coming into O'Hare brings back a lot of good memories. We have about 38,000 employees across the globe, and we have various different brands, as you know. Some of you know, whether it's cereal, or dry mix, or Pillsbury, or even Green Giant. We still sell overseas, even though we don't have it in the United States, but Yoplait, Progresso. 100 brands that we market in 100 countries across the globe. Chris, if you want to flip to the next slide. So, this was a slide that our plant manager, Christina Govern, passed on to me that I didn't know, that the plant site actually started in 1903 as a canning company. And it's been a manufacturing plant or food plant since that time, so 120 years. Kudos to Belvidere and the employees for that continuation of the food manufacturing at that site. We got involved as General Mills when we bought Pillsbury back in 2000. And that's, and at that time, we were primarily using it for Green Giant, canning for Green Giant products. We actually sold that business and have evolved that plant into heavily focused on, sorry, snack bars, Nature Valley, Lara Bar, and our food service business. And Chris, you want to flip to the next slide? Well, that's the money shot of the plant itself, quite a lot of investment in that plant over the years. But the next slide will show you some of the products that we're making there today. And I think that's the resilience of this site for us. It's a, our bar business is a strategic growth business for us. And we've shifted the manufacturing at Belvidere to focus on, you know, once we sold Green Giant, heavily invested in lines for snack bars and our food service business, which serves cafeterias, schools, et cetera. We are continuing to invest in that plant, and that's one of the reasons why we're here tonight for this Belvidere facility. So, Chris, if you want to sort through the next one here, yep. Our employees here also in Belvidere are very active in the community. It's one of the kind of core foundational elements of the General Mills employees is that, look, if you're going to be working, we have a plant. We, I think we donate to 14 different organizations in this community. So, the ethos of General Mills is really, if we're going to be a partner of the community, we also have to invest our employee time and also the organization's money to serve those communities. Today, we have over 500 employees at the plant and continues to have job openings. So, that's a plug for people, if they know anyone looking for a job. So, why, why Belvidere for this distribution center? And I'd say there's a couple of key reasons for that. Right now, we're in the midst of reorganizing our Midwest distribution network. And with that, we have been, it's been a multi-year project where we've looked at a number of different sites across the Midwest. About 80% of the product that's coming into this distribution center are going to be coming from plants across the US. It'll serve as kind of a Midwest distribution center, serving kind of an upper Midwest market area. In that case, we'll have products coming in from all over the country. We'll be consolidated here and shipped out to customers, either distribution centers, direct to some stores, and in some cases, even our customers will pick up from the site, truckloads of product. The other 20% of the facility is going to be used actually to serve the plant. Raw material, packaging, and some of the finished products from the plant. So, the benefit really for us is, you know, the inbound or the outbound traffic that's handling that 80% of the facility, you know, has proximity, the Irene Road intersection proximity to I-90 is just a, is a fabulous site for us in terms of the transportation network. And then yet a bonus is it's five miles from the plant to serve the raw material and plant needs. So, for us, that location really had a two-pronged benefit, and it's one of the reasons we're here tonight. The project development cost is going to be, is going to be over $100 million for this 1.3 million square foot facility. General Mills will be invested in somewhere $24 to $25 million, and that's primarily in racking and automated forklifts that we're introducing in this one. We've done one of our first ones in the country. We expect that process to be rolled out to many of our other distribution centers across the country. The beauty, the air elements of this site that are very important to us is, as we go into this originally, we're not going to have it racked 100%. Gives us the ability to grow by adding racking. It also has, the site has the ability to add 400,000 square feet to it. So, we have the ability to grow internally and externally based upon our growth in the business. We are targeting the startup of this facility, fourth quarter of '23. We wish it could be sooner. We're just facing a lot of supply chain challenges in the construction side these days. And we estimate about 55 new employees. And again, as that facility grows into itself, more racking, there'll be more employees added over time. It's just hard for us to commit today with what we know today. So, that's our expectations. We see that number grow. So, with that, I'll spin it over to you. Back to you, Chris. Thank you. I'm here all night for questions after, so thank you. Thank you.
Yep. All right. Just wanted to share a little bit about Skanel Properties, who we are, what we do, why we're here, and why we're working with General Mills. So, we're a privately owned real estate company. We focus on build-to-suit and speculative developments across the country. We were founded in 1990 by Bob Skanel. He's still very active in our operations today. You probably won't see him at an entitlement meeting, but he is very active. And we think that's something that's a great benefit to us, is having the name on the building actually involved with our processes. Our relationships, we take pride in our relationships. 60% of the work that we're doing currently in this alliance with the same statistics over the year, 60% of our work is repeat customers, General Mills, Amazon, FedEx, Fortune 500 type of companies. We like to work with them, and they seem to like to work with us. So, we take pride in our relationships and what we can bring to the table from a relationship standpoint. A little bit of relevant experience, we just finished up, and we're kind of working through some final punchless stuff with Tom and his team on a 330,000, or just under 330,000 square foot, single load facility in Caledonia, Wisconsin. So, we have a recent, very good understanding of the General Mills process, again, to help streamline this for you guys, everybody here, for the city, and for General Mills, the client as well. And then just a little bit about our volume. We did north of $3 billion worth of product across over 21 million square feet of warehousing, distribution, and warehouse facilities in 2021. I think we're on track to at least hit that and potentially go beyond that here in 2022. So, we're certainly doing a lot of product. We have good experience in this space, and we're looking forward to getting this one going as well. Just wanted to share some of our clients. Again, we take a lot of pride in repeat business, who we're working for, who we're bringing to these communities. So, just wanted to give you an example of some of the companies that we're working with and we're bringing to the table here. And then relevant experience, I've touched on the General Mills Caledonia site that is just wrapping up. General Mills and their group, they'll have to have been, they're operating out of that facility now. And then the building here on the right is a 3.8 million square foot, multi-level, distribution office, warehouse facility for an undisclosed tenant. I'm sure you could probably take a pretty good guess at who that tenant might be. But that's just to show the scale and the product that we can deliver because this is a larger building. And with those Skanel details, we're going to get into some annexation, rezoning, that sort of information. And Nancy's going to start us off there.
All right. So, now we get to the hard stuff for you. I don't know if you've seen these before, but starting last Monday, we had three boards that have been in City Hall with the details and the drawings so that people could take a look at them, go up close, point at them, understand a little bit more about how this fits into the neighborhood, how, and what it's going to do. So, in order to get these jobs and in order to get this investment here and bring General Mills back to have a second location here, there are some things we need to ask the city to do. First of all, it's in the county. It's not in the city yet. So, step number one is, we have to get an annex into the city. Right now, Skanel has a contract, has under contract this corner. I think you know the railroad track goes down this way. Irene Road is on the left with that really scary hairpin turn near the bottom. I just did that, and the truck in front of me was wobbling when I passed it. And then there's an industrial park on the right-hand side. Morium Drive is that street that goes straight west and then kind of dead ends right there. So, this is the piece of land that they're looking at buying and that they have under contract. And the first thing we're requesting of the city is to annex it into the city so that the city can then help it develop, and the city gets the advantage of the taxes, and we work with the municipal water and sewer there. If you go to the next slide, Chris, for me. This is kind of a combination slide to kind of show you several different things about the property. Once the property is annexed into the city, then what we need to do is subdivide it into three parcels because it's too much land for just the General Mills location. And frankly, one of the things that we want for the city is that when General Mills builds on this Lot 1 on the north side, we want this whole area to be attractive, to bring other businesses in, to use Lot 2 on the south side and the road, and the land on the west. One of the very first things that your engineer told us when we came and talked is that we have to do something to improve Irene Road. And so, as you'll see, if you look at the red line, which from the slide before, was the land that we're asking to be annexed. What the city is requiring, and what we've agreed to do, is to take and donate, I think it's an 80-foot wide right-of-way, to make, move Irene Road further to the east and soften it so that it can have decent curves, a safer intersection, and that the traffic won't be coming at the 20 intersection at such an odd angle, which of course is difficult for the truck traffic, not just here, but also for the industries that are further north. So, by moving Irene Road over to the east, which is a big expense, what we end up with is Lot 1 on the north, which is part of the subdivision. That's where General Mills is going to go. Lot 2 on the south is going to end up also being an industrial property. And then the land west of New Irene Road, which we're calling Lot 3, you know, we have to see what the market wants from that. But what you can expect is probably a gas station, a restaurant, a truck stop, something that'll service this whole area, but also will make the Belvidere exit a more attractive exit for people to get off and develop more land around there. That corner isn't really big enough for industrial. It didn't make sense for industrial. So, after annexing the property, the first thing that we're asking for is to divide this into these three parcels, which we think makes the most sense based on what the size is. The other thing that they're doing in addition to that 80-foot right-of-way for New Irene Road is, the city has requested, if you look over to the right-hand side, you see that brown circle? They wanted to have a cul-de-sac there so that Morium Road didn't just end up in a square, that it ended up in a place where there could be a truck turnaround. So, that land also is being donated to become the part of Morium Road, to be a truck turnaround and service that property better. So, the second step after annexation is, we're asking for a preliminary plat and then a final plat to divide these into three parcels that are the right size that they can be developed. The third thing we're asking for is rezoning. And this shows you that everything east of Irene Road is going to be requested to be zoned HI, heavy industrial. If you, there's a picture we have later that you'll see a little wider bird's eye view of the surrounding areas. And there's a lot of industrial around there of various different sizes. That's what makes the most sense, and frankly, that's what the market wants. And then the southwest side, on the west of New Irene Road, we're proposing then, as I said, to be commercial. GB, general businesses, the rezoning category that seems to fit best for the kind of user you normally see at an intersection like that, so close to the interstate. And that's what will happen. What they're doing here is, they don't want to waste your time or our time just trying to imagine who's going to go there. So, what we're doing is Lot 2, the southern industrial lot, and the west lot are going to stay in ag use until a user comes who actually can use that land. And at that point in time, then they will come back to you and get the specific site plan approvals and the approvals for that. So, you are not, other than rezoning it into the category that makes most sense, you are not making that decision tonight. You still have another chance to look at exactly how that is going to lay out in the future when the user comes who needs it. So, that's what's being asked for here. That will stay in ag use until that happens. Okay? And then, I'm just, I think Adam's going to talk now a little bit more about some of the technical things about the buildings, since he's the engineering brain.
Thanks, Nancy. As Tom mentioned before, the base building itself outlined here in brown is about 1.3 million square feet. The orientation of the site is really built on not just that building itself with those future expansions that Tom had mentioned. So, if you take a look at this building itself, we put the, what we call the front of the building a lot of times, which is the shortest side, up against the road. And then we projected the building with the trailer docks oriented on the south and north, running away from the building. And then with that, the idea with this is to develop all the lighter pavement that you see here in white around that core building shell. But then on the eastern side here, there's potential of two expansions, one expansion, a combination of whatever to get another 400,000 square feet on it. So, really, this site plan does accommodate the full 1.7 million square foot that is the hopeful growth of this facility here. And underneath these roads and in the trailer parking and all that, we're going to put the infrastructure in place to support that as well. So, if you look at the Morium Road here, water is going to be extended from Morium Road down Central Utility Corridor, which will be our property line, end up in Irene. And then it's actually going to go off the screen here and loop back into the system. So, with this project, it'll be a catalytic event to loop the water system as well and make that better for not just us, but our neighbors. On the same token, sanitary sewer is going to be extended down that same utility core, ultimately serving as an infrastructure backbone for the future development that Nancy had made mention to. On the realm of the site's functionality here, it's really being set up for pedestrian car, employee car traffic, and truck traffic to service it. But we are, we situated the building to have potential rail spur in the future as well. So, it can be retrofitted to have that secondary form of transportation. And so, with the idea in mind that we have a rail corridor here, our building here, we centralized a vast majority of the trailer parking itself on the north side of the building, so it's on the opposite side of the building. We do have expansion capabilities on the south, but right now, it's all being planned on the north. And so, to service this facility, oh, this is one giant loop here. This Morium Drive cul-de-sac is meant to be a gated or controlled access. So, the primary focus will be through one central check-in. And so, if you look right here, we have enough queuing on our own private driveway so 18 trucks could be there at one time. And so, that's something in the logistics business that's very important. It's so they're not staged on public roads, they're not staged, you know, up and down the neighborhood. It's something that they can be staged there if need be, if the facility wasn't open at a certain time. With that being said, I know a secondary component of this usually is, if you have all these trucks staged there, how's fire department get in? We do a bypass drive so they could go in the outbound lanes and get there, so they'll be, they'll be open at all times. And so, the functionality of truck traffic is, we do anticipate, you know, that 80% logistics side of things to be coming off I-90 from the south to the north. But then that, those internal Belvidere operations that Tom had made mention, it would all come in and out of the same operational point right here, so controlled access. On a storm waterfront, we're doing what we like to call the most efficient pond system you can get, is long linear ones. And so, all our storm sewer from the trailer parking lots, from the roof, so all go right into here, and so we'll have multiple openings. For the purposes of this exhibit, we showed the ponds as blue because most people recognize blue means water. But you're not going to see a full permanent water surface in all of these. We will be incorporating infiltration cells in it. So, realistically speaking, you'll see like a checkerboard if you look at an aerial on five years after it's built so we can infiltrate and, you know, basically reduce the amount of runoff coming off the facility. So, for another fancy term, recharge of the groundwater system. On this side, right here, we have that same pond concept here and then the utility. So, we don't envision that any future development from Lot 2 or Lot 3 will go back in here. They would have their own separate stormwater management system in place. That's pretty much it on the site plan. And, oh, one more. And then kind of moving into architecture here, I think that the most important component of this facility is, these renderings usually don't do justice. These colors are usually a lot brighter in slide shows than they are in life. But the idea of it is precast panels, modern Class A warehouse facility. So, most communities say, well, what happens if the tenant leaves? Well, this will be a releasable facility and still an asset to the community and the fact that all the facility will be built to modern technology and convenience. About 45 feet tall at its highest points around the site. So, it, the volume of the facility is quite large and can be manipulated, like Tom had said, with more racking or going vertically on the component. This slide, as you see here, is really just a perspective view to kind of show it's situated into the terrain with real life. This slide, as you see here, is really just a perspective view to kind of show it's situated into the terrain with real life. Again, the facility itself is situated well back. So day one, you'll see quite a bit of farm field from Highway 20 before you actually get to the facility. And even though it's a very, very large mass, it's, it's going to be situated back. So you, most people that don't know it's there won't know it's there.
Okay. So let me say what we don't have to ask you for. The height is inside your height boundary, so we don't have to ask you for a height variance. We have plenty of room on the site, so we're not asking for any kind of variance about how much land is roof and how much land is concrete. We are, we've been, we've been working actually kind of working through all the requirements and qualifications on the applications so that we think we fit everything that's needed there. And we've already gotten a few staff report comments back so that we know what's, what's happening. One other thing I want to mention about traffic and, and shielding is, it looks like there's only one railroad track here, but don't forget that when you go just slightly further east, it widens into, I don't know, four or five wide tracks there that have been there historically for a long, long time. So the, the truck traffic, the truck bays that Adam was talking about are really going to be facing the pond. Then there's like a 200-foot strip there and then there is the railroad. So from the, the view of the building from the truck dock side is going to be from the railroad side. On the east, as you can see, you've got industrial buildings, looking west at industrial buildings. From the south and even from Highway 20, as he mentioned, there's going to be a buffer of that pond and quite a bit of distance. And then we'll see what happens with the commercial site. It may be that we've got a couple of different users there who come in from different sides. But those will be a smaller sized building, you know, more in keeping with what that should be. The other thing to mention is that they've done a study, they had a traffic study that was done to figure out how much truck traffic and how much car traffic was going to be generated here. And one of the other things the city's requiring is that there's another intersection further north, and I just drove it and I forgot the name of it. Newburgh Road. They've done a calculation that at some point in time, when this building is built out, it's going to contribute 5% to the, that traffic up there, which is a pretty good intersection, pretty wide. But when in some time in the future it needs to be widened, this development has an obligation in the annexation agreement that we have to pay 5% of the cost of widening that intersection up there. So they're looking not just at the very little corner there, but also it's what's bigger. So now I want to talk a little bit about the public improvements that your city government has wrestled out of us. Before, before he had the sling on his arm, but. So I just want to, you know, talk turkey here. This development is going to produce a lot of jobs, it's going to produce a lot of tax benefit. But the other thing it's going to do is it's going to produce public improvements for the city. As we'd already discussed a couple of times, Irene Road is something that really needed to happen and this development will cause that to happen. We're working with the city and the city's making applications to the enterprise zone and to the state to help us fund this through a grant because it's going to help the whole area and help the traffic from the north to the south as it comes into the intersection. It will not only be for relocating the road, but also for putting water and sewer lines inside the road right-of-way of the road and also helping to improve the intersection on the south end where it joins Highway 20. So those are all obligations that, that we have. Adam mentioned that we're bringing water and sewer from where it exists right now in the industrial park to the east, down that diagonal, which is the property line, over to the new Irene Road and then up and down Irene Road so that water and sewer is extended and, and looped. We already talked about the cul-de-sac to approve Morium Road so that those trucks can turn around, although we're not going to have through traffic there and contributing to the cost of other things there. It is anticipated that the construction of this project is going to be create between 500 and 750 jobs. Now that's temporary, just during the construction period, but that's a lot of jobs and those are good paying jobs. And then once the plant is open, even before it expands, they're expecting up to 55 new jobs in this building alone. And then as new development happens on that lot on the south, as new development happens in that commercial lot, there'll be more commercial, the construction jobs and more, more other jobs there. We're also hoping, as you know happens, that once the city gets expanded to this corner, then there may be other areas around there that people would say, hey, this is a good, you know, the roadway looks good here, the water and sewer is there, we should be able to develop some more land around that and that will bring more businesses into the city of Belvedere. There's also a lot of tax revenue that's going to come in here. I saw the list of what all your taxing jurisdictions charge and your school district has a pretty big bill, as I'm sure is no surprise to you. But overall, just this building alone and the land there should be producing about $600,000 of new taxes for all those, the taxing entities that are there. Now, obviously some of the improvements that Skennell's putting in are going to be expensive and therefore the benefit of many more than just our particular lot. So we're working with the city and the city's helping us in a couple of ways, including making applications for some state grants that are there, that are available, that this, this project now qualifies you to apply for, to pay for some of the costs of extending the water and sewer and putting the roadway in. And that's, that's what we're helping. And the mayor, I don't know if the mayor's going to be speaking about the, some of the other, the incentives that we've talked about. But again, he has worked something out so that from day one, some of those new tax revenues go right into the city's pocket to help with other expenses of the city. And then, Chris, I don't know, if you want to finish up by talking about the schedule for, we've been doing so much work behind the scenes and thank you to your engineers and your planners and your mayor and your city attorney to get us to this point. But it also means that we're on a little bit of a tight time schedule going forward.
Yeah, I think this, and thank you both for running through that. This last slide is just our path forward over the next couple of weeks and months here. So you can see, we're obviously at our 11th committee of the whole meeting. We'll go right into planning and zoning tomorrow. Thursday, we're, we're at Boone County and then back and forth between, between Belvedere and Boone County for another couple of weeks here. Our goal is, is to hit this 5-2 city council greeting, May 2nd, to get through, through the entitlement process at, at the county here. And then we'll really ramp up and finalize a lot of project design and get ourselves going through permitting. Again, to, to hopefully mobilize later this year or as early this fall, late summer as possible. And then we'll take construction through and hopefully get, hopefully get that 11-1 targeted by the 2023. So just kind of a high level timeline of what we're looking at from a scheduling standpoint right now.
So we're all here to answer any questions. As you can see, we've got people from different parts of the team who know different parts of the project better. And we're happy to, the mayor, do you want to comment more or the city attorney?
I would, I would like to make a comment. As a lot of you know, we had wrestled with the investment that the city and the county had made 12, 13 years ago on Irene Road, the Irene Road interchange. The city and the county had went into, went halves in and purchased the property out there. But always the big elephant in the room was how do we serve that property to, with water and sewer, with services? This project obviously brings something that's very important to the community. It brings jobs. It will bring property tax and sales tax revenue. But probably more importantly, it is the best opportunity that we've had to be able to court any in future, any future investment out here in this area and be able to afford it. Certainly when the water and sewer services are run and they come across the property, they open up the lot. As has been discussed, Lot Two here for a future potential for heavy industrial user. And it also opens up Lot Three on this, on this scaled format that we see. But it doesn't only do that. It opens up the potential south of Bypass 20 for the interchange area in, that we've all made an investment. And it also opens up the potential for any property that is located to the west of Irene Road. As well, Irene Road, the way that it consisted and the makeup of Irene Road was certainly not conducive to any future development out there, industrial, commercial. So obviously this addresses that need in order to be able to have any future development, any future jobs, any future property tax revenue, any future sales tax revenue. This is an opportunity we felt that gave us the best chance to take advantage and be able to afford to court that in the future. So with that being said, I have met with all the aldermen in person, one at a time, went over many of the things that you folks have presented here this evening. So I will open it up to any questions that the council may have regarding this project as long as we have our friends from Skennell and General Mills here before us this evening. So if there are any questions regarding this project, feel free to raise your hand and ask away. Thank you. Alderman Burden.
Thanks Mayor. So I was presented some questions today regarding this. I don't know if I can 100% accurately answer them myself, so I thought I'd ask them here.
Sure.
Okay, the first question was who drafted this document, being the agreement?
You mean the annexation agreement?
Yes, please.
Your city attorney drafted that? And then we worked extensively on making the facts match. It's actually a master that the city uses, is that right?
The base agreement as all of our annexations are the city's form agreement, which is why it's kind of difficult sometimes because it's designed for residential use. I call it a collaborative effect or collaborative work, especially with respect to Exhibit K, which is the meat of the incentives that are in there, of the obligations that are in there along with the other exhibits. Those were collaborative effort between the developer and the city.
Thank you. The next question I was presented, how does the city intend to pay for 95% of the Newburgh Road intersection?
That right now is township jurisdiction on Irene and city jurisdiction on Newburgh. So at this point in time, it'd be cost share. And as additional development takes place in that area, then additional developers and their contribution to that intersection would also be expected to pay a share of that as well.
And I should just explain, the way a traffic impact analysis works is they look far into the future saying, what, what would this intersection need at some time in the future? That won't get improved now. It won't get improved until there are many more users there who need it. But they just have our money in the piggy bank to contribute towards it when at some time in the future it's needed. And if our development is finished before it's needed, then we have to just put the money into an account for them. So they'll wait until it actually gets needed based on all the traffic up there.
Right, thank you. So I know it was just 5%, so we were just wondering where the other 95% of that was going to come from in time. Another question, you had mentioned Exhibit K and that makes reference to a statement of project. Have we received that statement of project, the council?
That's a part of the annexation application. And it was kind of funny when I saw those questions earlier. Originally in one of the draft agreements, there was a statement of project in Exhibit K that's not usually in Exhibit K. And so it's referencing part of the annexation application.
That was originally, actually what we just explained to you tonight with the slides are pretty much what was that in that exhibit. It was just intended to have in this, in the beginning when we were working on the exhibits, to have, you know, two pages that kind of summarized what the facts were.
Thank you again. Just a few more.
Oh, sure.
Was presented, has there been any attempt to reduce the fee waivers described in 4E?
I didn't bring my draft up with me, so. Or is that some of the, some of the fees that are only due if it's residential development?
No, 4E is the sanitary sewer and water connection fees. So as part of the discussions, the city agreed that to facilitate development and keep in mind that, and Brent's going to correct me if I'm wrong, but it's not likely to be a very large water connection because it's primarily going to be domestic use. So it's not a huge waiver there. But we would waive the water sewer connection fees only with respect to Lot One. So again, only to the General Mills lots. Lots Two and Three, under this agreement, are, will be paying those connection fees at the time they construct a building, unless they come to the city and go to the city council and ask for some kind of forgiveness there at that time.
So it's not like a canning plant where you take a lot of water and put them in a can and then take them off-site? It, it's really just kitchens and bathrooms for the people who work there. It's, it's a big building, but doesn't have that much water or sewer need.
Thanks again. They're just questions and concerns I was presented with. And instead I try to answer them all myself. So that being said, then they asked, so who, who will be conducting the building inspections?
At that time, it's anticipated our only, our own building department will be doing that. We have two fully qualified commercial inspectors that can handle that. Correct me if I'm wrong.
You're welcome.
Okay, thanks again. And then since this property is in the enterprise zone, are the city's waivers in addition to the enterprise zone benefits?
So none of the identified benefits in the annexation, except for one, are part of the enterprise zone benefits. The property tax rebate program that's contained within Exhibit K is actually in lieu of the, the property tax abatement program that's contained in the enterprise zone. So they're not going to be able to double dip there now.
Okay, thanks again. And then the, the last question I was presented, do we think it's sound advice to recommend approval of a draft annexation agreement?
It's labeled draft simply because the final one will be presented for first reading next Monday night.
Thanks for the answer.
Thank you, Alderman Burden. Is that, are you, are you done?
Thanks Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions? Alderwoman Frank.
Refer back to my notes, okay. You did say that there were like four to five railroad tracks. Does that mean that you want to use them in the future, the railroad tracks for transporting?
Maybe. There's one main line that goes through. And then I don't know that we've got any aerial photos that are wide enough, maybe the green one that's behind you. But then it widens out into quite a few spur tracks. I don't know who it serves further east. But it, you know, depending on what the trucking costs are versus rail costs, sometimes it can be a big advantage to a business to be able to ship. That's why Gallo ships all its wine that way. So if, it, it's, it's a big undertaking to get a new spur track. But because you're right next to the road and the possibility is there, they have drawn the, the building with the possibility of being able to hook up a spur track there, but not in the very near future. Yeah.
Any other? Alderwoman Freeman.
Thank you Mayor. So this is a General Mills owned property. Will it be 100% General Mills operated and products there? Or will there be different other companies bringing products to this facility?
From an ownership standpoint, Skennell Properties will be the owner. Tom, you might want to touch on how you, your operations go, but it will be, General Mills will be the operator. Tom can touch on how they operate with three PLs.
So Skennell is going to own it and Skennell will sign a lease for the entire building to General Mills? And then he explains how he's operating it.
Yeah, we will, we will lease the entire building, a long-term lease from Skennell. And then we will have a third-party logistics provider who will operate the building on our behalf. It's consistent with almost every facility distribution center that we have across North America.
Tom, excuse me, could you might want to clarify, if it will all be General Mills product?
It will, yeah, oh, correct. All, yeah, definitely, yeah, all General Mills product, 100%.
Yeah, it's not a big public warehouse with lots of different operators and users.
Anybody else have any questions? All right, I will say I do want to thank you, all of you, General Mills, for making a future investment, again, in the city of Belvidere, and Scannell for all your help to be able to put this together. From the city's perspective, as we know, it's a very, very competitive market to be able to court projects like this. I think that the city, working with General Mills and Scannell, have landed a future for our investment out here that we would have never been able to realize unless we had this opportunity. So with that being said, if there are no other questions, I want to thank you again for coming and thank you for working with us. We're very grateful, appreciate it. Thank you.
So then we'll be back tomorrow night for planning and zoning, and then Thursday at the county, and we'll be back then for city council, first and second reading. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you, Tom.
So in regards to the scheduling that they have, is it possible that it would be to their benefit to waive the first reading if there's no hiccups at any or big concerns at any of the public hearings?
I don't think we have to.
Question, will we bring it back to the committee?
Want to bring it back?
We can waive the first reading and do...
No, we don't have to because the planning and zoning commission will be tomorrow night. The mayor was going to ask for a motion to forward this to council so we could have a first reading on the ordinance approving the agreement and the annexation next Monday night. So if you simply motion to forward it to council, the council could then consider it.
But we can't waive first reading, can't we? Just and do first...
We could, but as long as it goes to the first read next week, there's no need to.
Okay, I didn't know timelines if it would help them.
That doesn't, that doesn't help, and it's not needed, so we'll continue with the normal schedule that we do with the first reading and then bring it back.
Looking after the...
Appreciate it.
But Mr. Mayor, would it be appropriate to have a motion to forward the annexation of the subject property as well as the annexation agreement to the full city council next week?
Okay. Could we get a motion to do? Okay, motion by Alderwoman Prather, do we have a second? Second by Alderman Porter. Any questions regarding that motion? Thank you. Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, will, when their name is called, answer yes. Opposed, answer no, please.
Burton.
Epstein.
Flurry.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Mahal.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Nine in favor?
And then, just for clarification purposes, what the council will see next Monday night, assuming everything goes okay tomorrow night, is an ordinance approving an annexation agreement. That will be the final agreement, just take the draft off of it. You'll see an ordinance annexing the property. You'll see an ordinance approving the preliminary plat of subdivision. I believe there'll also be an ordinance approving the final plat of subdivision, as well as an ordinance with respect to the zoning on the property. So each of those will show up as separate ordinances next Monday night. They then lie over for two weeks for your further consideration, second reading on May 2nd.
And I do appreciate Alderman Snow, the offer regarding waiving of the first reading. One of the things as well that I'm very grateful for is the council taking the time within the last week to be able to come in and hear about this project, ask any questions, and be able to see firsthand the benefits and what's at stake for our future growth and our future tax incentives, so. Very grateful, I appreciate your help on that. Moving along here, reports of officers, boards, and special committees. Item one, building, planning, zoning on finished business, we have none. Item two, building, planning, zoning, new business, building, planning, update. Mr. Countryman?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to jump back to the Project Kelly and add that we have a very qualified fire department also that will be part of the plan review process and inspection process for this development, and the importance of, I know in the back of their minds, they're appreciative of this project because it actually loops the water services to the neighboring properties, and that helps fire suppression in the future, and this project will add that peace of mind. Anyhow, moving on, March was a busy month. We did 84 permits for a value of construction just under $3 million. 14 of those were commercial, residential were 70. Some commercial projects underway. Anderson Funeral Home is finishing up the first phase of their project. The garage is being built across the street. Neighboring property, Brashan Dental, is doing a facade improvement and parking lot improvements to their building. Crusader Clinic is under review. Walmart is doing some remodeling. We're waiting for building plans for Murphy's gas station. We have a big solar project at 720 Logistics. The name of the company escapes me right now. It's right off of Newburg Road. Franklin Wire, 1746 South State Gaming. Currently this year, we've permitted 40 houses. I believe we have currently probably about 100 houses under construction right now in As far as property maintenance, 22 cases are open. We closed 13 last month, and I'll entertain any questions.
Alderman Porter first, then Alderwoman Frank.
You mentioned the solar project on logistics. What's the status of that right now? How far along is it?
It's under the review stage.
I see.
They have a few comments from the fire department as far as accessing the roof in case there's an emergency, but as far as the review, I think staff is fine with it. There was one right down the road that was done last year, and I guess they're just trying to recapture some of their energy costs.
Okay, so this is a solar project for a specific unit, and it's not like a public power solar thing, then?
No, this is on top of a building out in the industrial park.
Good. Thank you, Alderman Porter. Alderwoman Frank.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question. You said you had 100 new houses. Are they basically all together, or are they scattered all throughout the city?
Currently, Farmington is, I want to say there's maybe 30 lots left, and that will be built out, and I believe they're moving to, they're currently under construction, Riverbend. I believe there's maybe 40 lots left there. Projection for this year was, they did 50 permits last year for new housing. They'll do 50 houses again this year, consisting of Farmington, Riverbend, and Deer Hills, along with Prairie Place has opened up their single-family lots for any independent builder that wants to buy them. Currently, there's four under construction under there. One is closed. As they sell, they will continue to build. The Preserve has a substantial amount of lots in there, but once Petrie Development finishes Farmington, that will be, all the infrastructure will be completed. Same with Riverbend, other than Halitz's development on Fuller or Foley to the west, and then I believe Frank Worstein owns the lots that back up Distillery Road and the Preserve. So those will be the only ones that lag after this push for development.
I just had one more question, and it has nothing to do with construction. I was asked, I promised this person I would ask you, what about sandwich boards when people, businesses put up sandwich boards? Do they have to get permits, and are we making sure everybody gets their permit?
I don't know the answer to that.
Sandwich boards in the right of way, like on the sidewalks, do require a permit. It's applied to, I believe, from the clerk's office.
Yes.
And I do not know, I mean, enforcement, that'd be through the code enforcement officer. I don't know what is done there or not.
Okay, I just promised this person I would ask. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Alderwoman Frank. Any other questions for Kip? Hearing none, thank you, Kip.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Moving on, we have planning, zoning department update. Gina?
I have six cases going to public hearing or a plan commission tomorrow. Four of them are related to Project Kelly. Then there's the Murphy Oil, which is the postage stamp gas station in front of Walmart. They are going to tear down and rebuild and be a 1,400 square foot gas station, so that will be a great benefit for the customers and the staff. And then Dairy Queen is going next to Taco Bell on North State Street, so they have their public hearing tomorrow. I do anticipate at least one case for May. I've been talking to a fast food restaurant that wants to locate next to Applebee's in front of Walmart. I expect their application in tomorrow. And then in June, I expect another heavy round of cases like this month. Site plans are kicking up, as Kip said, lots of construction projects going on, so there's site plan reviews. Downtown overlays kicking up. Zoning letters are pretty consistent. Historic Preservation had a fundraiser on April 2nd that regardless of the horrible weather we had, it was pretty successful, so that was good. And I, they sent out, or I sent out grant applications, and three downtown businesses did apply for that for facade improvements. So Historic Preservation will be voting on those this month, trying to get some Heritage Day stuff done, and that is the biggest thing at the moment.
Okay, is there anybody had any questions for Gina? Alderman Porter.
Just a quick one. What did you say was possibly going in by Applebee's?
A fast food restaurant that they'll need a special use for the drive-through lane.
Any other questions for Gina? All right, hearing none. Thank you, Gina. Item C to C, we have Welcome to Spring 2022 Festival here this evening. We have a request from the applicant for requesting a temporary use permit to hold the Welcome Spring 2022 Festival on May 28th, 29th, 30th, 2022 in the parking lots of Fiesta Market and RP Lumber. That report is in your packet, if everybody's had a chance to look at it. Could we get a motion to that effect, please? Motion by Alderman Flurry, second by Alderwoman Mohal. Any discussion regarding that? I see that we have Mr. Eddie Batris here this evening. Hi, Eddie. Thanks for coming. If anybody has any questions, he might be able to help us answer that. Alderman Snow.
So the biggest concern years past was the sound. Just want to make sure we write heard because neighboring people aren't always big fans of excessive loudness, especially into the evening. I realize it goes till 10:30 on the two nights and 8:00 on the other, so if you could just keep an eye on that, that'd be greatly appreciated.
Mr. Batris, if I could interrupt you, excuse me. Would you mind coming up here in front of the microphone so that a lot of times I'll get, I'll get emails and phone calls from those that can't hear, so thank you. Appreciate it.
Well, first of all, thank you, Mayor. Thanks for your time. Thanks for considering. We have a sound assistant professional director this time, and my background comes from management. I used to administrate plants before. I used to work for American Brands for quite a few years, and I take rules and standards very, very seriously. At the same time, I enjoy working with the community and for the community. We're going to be watching this out, and we got already a program for that, so. Thanks for the concern.
Okay. Any other questions before Mr. Batris leaves the microphone? Any other questions? I don't want to have him running back and forth. Okay? All right, hearing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, then, we have a motion and a second on the floor regarding the applicant's request for a temporary use permit to hold the Welcome Spring 2022 Festival on May 28th, 29th, 30th, 2022 in the parking lots of Fiesta Market and RP Lumber. All those in favor, do we need a, I don't need a, no. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passed. Item three, Public Works on finished business, we have none. Item four, Public Works, new business. Item A, Public Works update. Brent, Mr. Anderson?
Thank you, Your Honor. A little update on Florence and Court Construction and Logan Avenue Construction. The weather hasn't been very friendly to us. However, the good news is they did start construction on Florence Court today. If you've noticed, there was a local detour on Logan Avenue. The contractor is in Logan Avenue to make the extent, connections to the existing sanitary sewer and water mains in Logan to get them in. They should be out of their plan on being out of there, hopefully weather permitting by Wednesday, and then their work will continue as weather permits. As far as Logan Avenue construction goes, again, they're just looking for window of opportunity as it relates to the weather, so I would expect that project to be getting started shortly, if not the end of this week, then early next week probably, if, again, if the weather permits. The other thing in your packets tonight was the water and sewer rate survey that the city of Genoa does on an annual basis, and again, I would like to just point out how reasonable the rates are in the city of Belvidere for the 16 facilities that shared information in the surrounding area for water and sewer rates and how Belvidere compares to that list. Again, our rates are extremely reasonable and something we can be proud of, and again, that's a big selling point when we come to talk about industrial development and development around the city is where our water and sewer rates are. So again, for your information, that was in the packet. Any questions?
And item B, thank you, Brent, item B, we, before we move on, yeah, the, Mr. Anderson included the water sewer rate survey, just a one-piece, one-sheet article referencing just what he said, how competitive our rates are, and how that does assist us as we try and attract industrial development. Certainly, it appeals to all development, commercial.
It does, so we could, if there's a big water user out there, that would be good, but just seeing.
Yeah, there's a plug, there's a plug for a large water user if you're out there listening, so. Okay. Yeah, so we'll move on here. Item B, 2022 MFT Street Maintenance Program. Brent?
Thank you, Your Honor. On your desk tonight was the proposed list for our overlay streets. On your desk tonight was the proposed list for our overlay streets. No action needed tonight. Take them home, review them, look at them. Any comments, concerns, questions, let me know. It'll be back on the agenda for our next committee meeting where I'll be looking for a motion to approve so we can get that work started as far as on the contract bid forms and so forth to get that work done this summer.
Okay. I know in the past Aldermen have weighed in on some of the streets that they felt needed attention more than others or combining. Certainly, there's been some changes that have been made. So you have, you have what's on the list, and any suggestions that you have are welcome, so. And item C, Brent, to you again, Newburgh Lifts, Newburgh Number One Lift Station Upgrade.
Memo in your packets. Last November, the council approved a replacement pump in the amount of $19,362 for the Newburgh One Lift Station. The delivery of that pump was delayed and subsequently that order was canceled because it could not be fulfilled, which is actually a benefit for us because that allowed us to do some, some further investigation into what's going on out there, the current conditions out there. And it does, it's apparent to us that further review of those conditions indicates an updated design is warranted. Attached to the memo is a proposal from CES to complete the redesign of the Newburgh One Lift Station in an amount not to exceed $7,400. This work will be paid for from line item 615-820-6190. Preliminary estimate, we're looking at probably anywhere from $60,000 to $100,000, depending on availability, parts availability and stuff to complete the upgrade. But we'll know more once their work is completed. And then that cost would be anticipated to be, that would be a depreciation account expense.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Second by Alderman Prather. Okay, so we have the motion on the floor for a proposal with CES Inc. to complete the redesign of the Newburgh One Lift Station in an amount not to exceed $7,400. All those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry. Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you, Mayor. So Brent, I'm a, I'm a little, this concerns me. So if this motor had been delivered on time, would it have just been installed and then, you know, it was, what, $19,362? Or would we have, at the time of installation, figured out that we needed a, you know, close to $100,000 motor at that time, or?
Well, it's not necessarily, it's just the motor, it's not the cost of the motor. It's basically the redesign of the lift station itself. What went into that can, we've lost three motors in the last 10 years at that lift station. So the, so we, when we looked at the, investigated further based on what we see now with the incoming flows and the operation of that lift station, it requires modifications. So we have, we can match up the, the pump motor and the pumps with the curve that it wants to do, design curve, so we get the most efficient use out of those pumps that we can. So the pumps will be a redesign, and then the rails, of course, that are go into the, to the lift station itself will be redone. The connections, the pipe connections at the bottom will also be redone. The work that's, for that work to be done, bypass pumping is also required of the station as well. So it has to be coordinated, and that's also part of the cost. So in the net effect, when we're done, we'll have a much more efficient system. We'll get the best use of those pumps that are possible, and it will prolong the life of each of the pumps and not go through them like we are right now.
So would we have discovered that, though, back in November if that other pump had come in on time and before installing it or while installing it? And would that been able to have been sent back and done from there?
Well, that's basically what transpired because of that, that lag time on that delivery and subsequently canceled. That's why, because we looked at the information and decided that we needed to do a better upgrade or more upgrade to the system, to that lift station, as opposed to just replacing the pump.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Anderson? Okay, hearing none. We have a motion and a second on the floor then. All those in favor for the redesign, CES to complete the redesign of the Newburgh Road Lift Station in the amount not to exceed $7,400, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. And we also have item D, the Stormwater Utility Update. Brent?
All right, in the packets, there's a, there's several pieces of information there for the Stormwater Utility and where we are at in the process. The first one being the single blue sheet funding stormwater programs in Belvedere. That's a proposed little mailer fold-out to be sent out to all of the, all of our residents, all of the city residents, as a mass mailing. Following that, there's also a, a word project or program, the computer program to have, again, the highlights of what the, what consists of the project. And this will be available on the city's website for residents to review. And we also have, next to that would be the Belvedere Stormwater Fee questionnaire that again be posted on the website and also reference made to be sent out to the notices to the public. So I'm looking for any review comments, any, any suggestions on that information going forward. We will probably put this out to the public for the month of May with the idea of having probably one or two public open house type meetings to answer questions and explain the program, what it is, probably sometime in June to get that feedback. So ultimately, we can come back to the council and see if they want to proceed with that process of establishing a stormwater utility fee. In addition, the last thing I included was a copy of our MS4 Program Draft Permit Annual Training that we had last month and what the next term permit requirements are. Right now, we budget $30,000 in our general fund, street department budget for stormwater, storm sewer repairs, MPDS permit work that we have to do. And there are several additional requirements in this next term that are outlined in this document. So I would encourage you to look through that document and just get a handle or feel for, for all the things that are expected of us as an MS4 entity and the things that paperwork and the stuff that we have to do as a part of compliance for that permit. Again, there's a lot of extra work that's being contemplated on this next phase of the MPDS permitting process. So if you have any questions, when you look through it and this stuff, if you have any questions, again, get ahold of me, and we can go through it in more detail.
And Brent, these are, these are new, these are new, this is new laundry list that is going to be required?
Yeah, they're in addition to what we already do. Just one for a matter, a matter of fact, all of our stormwater detention facilities have to have an annual inspection currently. The new proposal is now you have to do those quarterly. And again, you have to document them, and you have to substantiate them and so forth. So it's, it's filled with, with more activities and more things that we have to do. It's heavy on education, on, on community involvement and education. Again, that takes time, effort, and documentation as well.
Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you. So Brent, um, this one, this one's good. I'm glad everybody's going to get that along with what their water bill.
Well, not sure, not sure if it's going to go in the water bill because that raises a whole spectrum of issues. It may be easier for us just to do a mass mailing. Yet to be determined.
So this, this portion, that's online only?
No, that will probably be sent out as well with this, with a reference to it to please fill it out and send it back. And it'll also be online available too.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Correspondence in your packets from Braniff. It's the annual preventive maintenance agreement renewal proposal from Braniff. And the cost there is $5,760, which is a $180 increase over last year. My recommendation would be to approve the proposal from Braniff for the annual maintenance agreement for the city's tornado sirens at a cost of $5,760.
Thank you. So Brent, is this the outfit that does our first Tuesday of the month, practice sirens or?
I'll defer to the chief because they, we do them and we check them. If there's any issues that we see, then we call them, I believe is how it works.
I can tell you that our VIPs go around, it's the first Tuesday that the sirens go off. Yeah, our VIPs go around, make sure that they're working, and we communicate and coordinate with the street department, Public Works.
And this will also include, they have one preventive maintenance where they come out and do the inspections and, and perform all the, all the routine maintenance, I should say, on those sirens.
Aye.
Thank you. You've got a memo in your packet that I'll just go through real quick. As you know, last fall, the city of Belvedere received 1.7 million in American Rescue Plan Act or ARPA funds. While the funds can be used in a number of ways, the following immediate needs, both of which are eligible uses, have been identified. One, Southwest Tower rehabilitation in the amount of $600,000, and primary clarifier upgrades in the amount of $700,000. The Southwest Tower rehabilitation project will be completed during FY '23. Engineering work for the primary clarifier upgrades will begin late this fall, with the remainder of the work occurring in FY '24. Therefore, the above represents engineering fees and initial construction costs only. The entire project cost is estimated at 1.4 million. Both projects are currently part of the capital schedule and the proposed budget for FY '23. I recommend approving the use of approximately 600,000 of ARPA funds in FY '23 for the Southwest Tower rehabilitation project, and the use of approximately 700,000 of ARPA funds in FY '23 for engineering fees and initial construction costs for the primary clarifier upgrades. And Mr. Anderson can respond to any project-related questions you may have.
Okay. Brent, I don't know if you had any comments regarding that, regarding those requests?
I think it's pretty self-evident there that, again, we, they are both eligible uses, they're both needs. And I guess I will say that, that using the ARPA funds to, for these two purposes would probably alleviate the need for any water and sewer rate increase, at least during this, for this upcoming fiscal year.
All right, any questions for Brent? Brent, regarding that. Alderman Porter?
Well, I guess I would ask, it said the funds could be used in a number of different ways. Do we have any other concerns that are more pressing than this that have been identified?
Well, I will answer that. We have a variety of pressing needs, obviously, but I'm not so sure that any of them probably supersede the requests that we have in front of us here, both down at the sewer plant with, I mean, you know, we need to make sure that we invest in a plant here just for facilities to be able to provide service and as well as a water tower. So this is, we'll use 1.4 approximately of the 1.7 for this fiscal year. Next year, there'll be an additional 1.7 million that will become available. And at that time, then we'll certainly look at whatever the needs are and their priorities accordingly. But I'm convinced, yeah, that this, this would be something that would, we would want to do. In answer to your question. Alderman Flurry?
Thank you. So do we have anything else earmarked for the approximately 300,000 remaining for this year, or just going to roll it into next year?
Defer that to Ms. Hanson?
We have not identified any other projects right now. We do have until the end, December 2024, to use these funds.
Thank you. Any other questions? So I guess, you know, we need a motion then to recommend the use of approving the ARPA funds for 2023 for the Southwest Tower rehabilitation for 600,000 and the 600, 700,000 primary clarifier upgrades for engineering fees and initial costs regarding these upgrades. Could I get a motion to that effect, please? Motion by Alderwoman Prather, second by Alderman McGee. Any other discussion, comments, questions? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Hanson. Item five, under other, we have Police Department. We have the acceptance of a $3,000 grant from Walmart for the purchase of two new canine kennels and exercise equipment. Chief Woody?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you would turn to the memo in your packet, please. On March 22nd, 2022, the Belvedere Police Department applied for a community grant from Walmart in the amount of $3,000. Walmart recommended our grant application, and the Belvedere Police Department received final confirmation that the grant was awarded. This grant does not require any matching funds, and upon approval, would be used for the purchase of two canine kennels at approximate cost of $1,800. The information is also contained in your packet pertaining to those. Any remaining funds would be used to purchase additional exercise equipment for the Belvedere Police Department. I would request a motion to accept a $3,000 grant from Walmart for the purchase of two canine kennels and exercise equipment for the Belvedere Police Department.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Flurry. Any other discussion? Alderman Snow? And then Alderwoman Freeman, so I don't miss you.
So I'm assuming these kennels will be going to the handler's location, and what happens when the dog retires? Do we get that kennel back? Or is it just kind of quasi left into the officer's property at that point?
We've done it both ways. Historically, we try to repurpose the kennel, but it depends what type of shape the kennel's in. Also depends on if the handler ends up retiring the dog and maintaining possession of the dog as well. So, you know, based off of those circumstances, we kind of take it case by case. So we've done it both ways.
Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few, so bear with me, if you will. So Chief, we have always supplied our canine officers with these, I guess, at-home kennels?
Yes, Mayor, we have.
Okay. So, you know, my idea, I guess, okay.
All right. Any other questions for, regarding this? Yes, there you are.
Okay.
Alderwoman Frank?
Thank you. Why do we have kennels for our canines outside?
They, they're not family pets. We, we try and socialize and integrate them, but they are not meant to be family pets. So we do keep them outside. We allow them, this kennel, for their place to, to go when they're not actually working. So if the camp, the handler's not at home, that's where the dog's going to spend its time.
So the dogs aren't free to be in the home because of the children or the family?
Procedurally, yeah, we just don't do that. We've Procedurally, yeah, we just don't do that. We've shied away from that just because it's still the city's liability if something were to happen. So it's just a safeguard. Not that there's necessarily an inherent risk, but it's just one that we figure if the handler's not going to be around, it's best that the, the canines put into a kennel away from anybody because ultimately, it's supposed to be the handler who is taking care of the dog, not the family.
So in the winter, it stays out all night?
That's going to be a case by case, depending on what the handler feels is best for the canine. But, you know, in addition to just the kennel itself, they would make accommodations for inclement weather as well.
Okay. Any other que? Any other questions? Any other question regarding the motion that we have on the floor? Okay. Hearing none, then I'll just repeat this. We have a motion on the floor to accept a $3,000 grant from Walmart for the purchase of two, two new canine kennels and exercise equipment for the Belvidere Police Department. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion passed. Thank you. And thank you to Walmart for their contribution. Item B, Chief Heiser's not with us here, but Captain Shadle is, so welcome.
Thank you, Mayor.
Nice to see you.
Thank you. Have a couple items for you guys, consideration today. The first one is painting at Station 1. As you guys know, we had plaster repair done on our fire station, Station 1. It's the 100-year-old station, and now it's in need of paint, both upstairs and on the apparatus floor where those repairs were done. We sought out three bids. We have five-star painting with a total bid of 17,287. We have Renaissance painting with a total bid of 14,500, and TNT painting with a total for 9,400. My recommendation is that we entertain a motion to go with the low bid TNT painting in the amount of 9,400.
Okay. Could I get a motion of that effect, please? Motion by Alderman Flurry, second by Alderman Porter. Discussion, Alderwoman Freeman.
Thank you. Lieutenant, is it Lieutenant Shadle? Captain Shadle. So this is painting needing to be done because of the water damage from the roof?
There's definitely part of that. Part of the ceiling was damaged in a couple areas from that, but we also took the time to fix some of the major cracks that were throughout the station in the plaster, and we had those fixed too. And just in general, it was about time for painting. Even had we not done those repairs, it would probably have been best to get those. So it was not all directly caused from that water damage, but there was a couple spots in the ceiling that were definitely where the plaster was fixed and our need of painting, but it wasn't the primary driver of the project.
Okay. Because I was down at the Boone County Shopper probably last fall, and Chief Heiser called me in and gave me a tour of the new remodeling stuff, and I actually exclaimed at the paint color that was so nice in some of the rooms that you guys had had. So those aren't needing to be repainted, right?
No, no. All that is good to go still.
All right. Alderman Snow?
So that's quite a disparity between the 17 grand and the 94. Any reasonable explanations or just the nature of the business in that regard?
Captain Maternal fields these bids, and he's responsible for the stations. And I just have faith that if one was not everything, he would have chosen to go with something. So my assumption is that these are apples-to-apples comparison, and then, you know, obviously, some contractors' costs are just that much different. But the, for the project as it was outlaid, they appear to all be apples-to-apples bids.
Some people may need work, some people may not. I think that sometimes has a lot to do with it, too. But apples-to-apples, yep. Alderman Porter?
Yeah, just a quick question. So you don't feel that there was enough of damage that could be possibly, some of it submitted to the insurance company for reimbursement?
I can give you my assumption. I don't have a direct answer to that, but if I were to look at the amount of painting being done compared to what is being, where the water damage primarily was, which was like in two main spots, I would say that 90% of this cost, at least 90%, if not more, is just the general painting for all the repairs and throughout the space, and the water damage is a smaller portion of that. But I can find out for you if you'd like.
The city's actually already received payment for the insurance damage, damage to it from the insurance company. So that would have been included in that payment that we've already received.
And I think part of this was, as Captain Shadle said, the work that was done that was probably long overdue regarding the plaster and, and then some other painting, not necessarily. It was my understanding that the council was diligent to be able to repair the roof before we had any significant damage on there as well. So I think all of this is probably the fact that, I don't know, how old is this building, Captain?
It's over 100 years.
Over 100 years. So I think the plaster work was culmination of that, and the paintings probably putting a ribbon on it. So, yeah. So, any other questions? Alderwoman Frank?
Thank you, Mayor. So what's the timeframe? If this is approved tonight, when would it start?
I don't know the answer to that. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Hearing none. Then we have a motion on the floor to accept the low bid for 9,400 from TNT Painting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion passed. Thank you.
Yes, sir. The next item for your consideration is the, it's a door that leads into and out of our training room. And I'm not sure, in your packets, are there any pictures? I think this one had some pictures included. Yep. As you can see, that solid wood door is in need of repair. So what's going on too is anytime it rains or there's humidity, we can't lock the door very easily. You have to push it from the outside to get it to lock. So we sought out three bids. We got two bids back, and the two bids that we got back include fixing above the door where the transom. I believe you have another drawing where it shows a door, and then the replaced transom and glass. So that's what these bids are for. So the first bid from Barkhold Door Company is 4,373. The next bid from Mike Crop Door Service was 5,350. And then we did get a third bid back. Actually, Buyer Builders was 6790, but that was the material only and not the installation. So therefore, my recommended motion would be to repair the door with the Barkhold Door Company in the amount of 4,373.
Okay. Thank you, Captain. Motion by Alderman Porter, second by Alderwoman Mohaw. Any other questions for Captain Shadle? Alderwoman Freeman?
Yeah, just, just out of curiosity, what does this door exit to?
It exits the rear of Station 1. So if you were to walk through the normal entrance that you go through and then walk through our training room, and then that door would then lead to the back parking lot.
Thank you. Any other questions? Alderwoman Mohaw? Thank you.
I see that there is an air conditioner above that. Is, do you guys use that at all or no? Because I see you replacing it with glass, so that'll just be removed.
Correct. It'll just be removed. It's not in use. Since then, there's been an actual air conditioning unit that covers that area.
Thank you. And the, this door goes out to those metal stairs at the back, right?
Correct. Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Alderwoman. All right. Any other questions? Alderman Snow?
So description-wise, I'm not real familiar with all this. So is this going to be a metal door now, or will it wind up being a wood door similar to what's already there?
It's going to be a metal door. Metal door.
All right. Okay. Any other questions? All right. Hearing none. We don't, yes, okay. So all those in favor of accepting the low bid from Barkhold Door Company in the amount of 4,373, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Thank you. And item D, Captain?
Item D is also related to the Station 1. This is for the apparatus doors, for the man doors where we enter inside the front and the back of the station there. What they have is keypad and key fob door locks, and we're seeking replacement of them. The main problem with these is when it's cold and below freezing or very humid, they don't work. So what we, when it's extremely cold, what we have to do is we have to prop open the back door in the morning for the guys coming on shift. So to replace those, this is the one where we sought out three bids and we got back two. So the first bid from M. Spinello is 8553 with an annual cloud fee of 594. The cloud fee is, all these things are smart connect, and so when someone comes in, it would register who entered and who left and things like that, and when the door was open and shut and things like that. So that is what the door installation companies have recommended as kind of the standard for when you replace one of these locks. That's what it includes. So, and then the other company had that as well. Had an installation of 5,447 and 50 cents with an annual cloud fee of 275. We also sought out a proposal from Alafont Lock and Safe, and we didn't get one back. So we recommend a motion for the low bid in the amount of 5,447 and 50 cents.
Thank you. Motion by Alderwoman Mohaw, second by Alderman Snow. Any questions for Captain Shadle? Alderman Brereton?
Thanks, Mayor. Just a question on the two that we got bids from. Are they obviously related? They brothers or something? I was making the same assumption today when I was looking at that.
Interesting.
Any other questions regarding the motion on the floor? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Thank you. And you have item E as well, Captain?
Yes, sir. This is the last item we're requesting consideration from, and there is a little bit of a typo in the memo, and I'll go over that. So what we're requesting is to purchase five additional radios, and these are the radios that we use every day. So to give you a quick history and not belabor the point, in 2017, I became in charge of communications, and we had 29 portable radios that were completely out of date. So when those radios were purchased, I think they were like maybe 600 or 800 each. And then when we went to get new fire department radios, they were between 4,000 and 6,000 each. And so we've been able to replace 14 of those radios, 14 of those, 29. We've kind of changed how we use them and hand them out to, to deal with the shortage. It still causes some issues, like if we're, a lot of members are training, then we're really digging out those old radios and, and using those on like a facility burn day or something like that. So firefighter Elwinger came up with a plan. It's been in the chief's capital plan for a couple years now. So Adam's plan was to do five radios a year for three years to get back up the inventory of radios. And so what I have in front of you today is requesting five thou, or five of those radios from the capital fund. Now, when Adam provided the bids for those radios, for those five, the price was what was in the capital fund, which, Shannon, what was that, 11,000?
11,827.
Since then, there's been a obvious price increase. So these are the same Ezek radios that were budgeted for then. And so the price today, if we get those, is 13,477 and 10 cents. So one thing I want to add to let you guys know is that there is a price increase also on May 9th, and I don't know what the price increase is going to be. Each time, it's been at around 10%. So I would expect with the supply chain issues and shortages that it would be in line with that again. But we have it budgeted last year and this upcoming year. We'll have to change it for the upcoming one, Shannon, because I know it's not 11,000 anymore.
Right. But that is, right now, what's in the capital budget for the five radios is again the 11,827.
Correct. So what I am requesting is to purchase five Motorola APX 4000 radios in the amount of 13,47710 from Rock River Service. I'm proposing that we do that from our capital fund. One thing I would like to highlight, that we had about 19,000 in our capital fund for some extrication equipment that we didn't use. So any overage would not take us over our total allotted amount in that capital fund. Is that correct, Shannon?
That is correct.
Okay. All right. Could I get a motion of that effect, please? Motion by Alderman Flurry, second by Alderman Porter. Any discussion regarding that motion? Will this be, will this, will this coming fiscal year, will that bring us to a conclusion on how many, how many more are we going to be short? Two more, two more years?
For this year, yes. The year ending at the end of April. I mean, we'll order it before then. It will, he'll probably order it as soon as your second reading, and that would be through this year. But then it would be five more next year. And the only reason why I brought up that price increase, and I know it's probably not possible to get next year's also at this price unless it was, a motion was made on a budget that's not 100% approved yet. So I know that's not going to happen. But I think that answers your question.
I was just curious, going forward then, these five and the next fiscal year, five more after that then?
And then five more in '24.
Five more in '24. Okay.
Yep.
That answers it. Thank you. Oh.
I was actually just going to say that it was, the last five would be in FY '24.
Thank you. Alderman Snow?
Can we use the ARPA money for this at all? To get the other, other radios at a more cost-effective thing as opposed to the price going up next year?
We should be able to, yes.
So could we amend that to?
You can amend it to order 10 radios then?
Yes.
Is that what you're saying? For total amount? Total amount of what, 26,900, 27,000? $27,000?
I'd make that motion.
Not to exceed 20, not to exceed 27,000?
Do we need a total of 15 right now?
That would complete the whole project, and we would be at our full radios, and we'd be good for a little while.
I'd make the motion that we... I'd make the motion that we buy all 15 this year now.
We would need a second on that first, and then we need to find out what that cost entails. So, so you're gonna make a motion then?
I'll make a motion to purchase all 15 now.
Okay. Second motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Stevens. Anybody have their calculator handy? So we know exactly what we're talking about regarding funding for that.
Mayor, I did quick math, and that's $40,431.30. And normally, I know anytime we're talking about that amount of money, that we get multiple bids. However, rest assured, with Motorola, these are state-set prices. So any vendor within the state that we're buying these for, it's going to be this price.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Captain Shadell. And these are obviously consistent with what we have purchased, so, yeah. Okay, so that total then is, with that motion, is $40,431.30. Is that correct? I thought I wrote that down right, Captain Shadell, but? Okay, yes. Okay. Alderman Freeman?
Thank you, Your Honor. So how long do these last before they're outdated?
It really depends on the radio and what it's put through. Some of these, we have some of our HT-1250s that have lasted 20 years. It doesn't seem like the newer radios last as long. I can tell you they have a five-year warranty. And our, other than the HT-1250s, our next batch of radios are from 2015, so that makes them about seven years old, and they're still working pretty well. So I would say a 10-year lifespan is a reasonable expectation from one of these portable radios.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just trying to justify voting for something all at once that was spread over the capital budget over three years. I'm assuming, so we have in 2023, five budgeted, and 2024, five budgeted. I'm assuming that in 2022, which I don't have in front of me, we also had five budgeted, and we're just now coming around to requesting that. And then, I mean, how many radios do you guys have total? Is this 15, then everybody will have all the same? Or what do you, what do you do with the ones that you still have that are operable? Then people are using different ones?
So right now, that would bring our total back up to 14 plus 15 is 29 and 7. So each member would have a radio, and then each frontline apparatus would then have a second radio. And the reason why we do that is the company officers, so we operate on two channels for dispatch, is one channel, and then as soon as we're on the scene, where there's, anytime there's like a car wreck or a fire or a gas leak, or anytime that there's more than one rig, we operate on fire ground red. So what the guys do is they have the radio like this one, which is on the main dispatch channel, and then inside my fire coat in my rig is a second portable radio, and that one is on fire ground red. And it's important for them to be on separate channels and to talk on those and then not to have them on scan. You could have them on scan, but then you don't know which channel that person talked to you on. So I, they carry two different radio mics, and they're different colors, so I know which one. And then our recommendation is for the company officers to do that. So each member would then have a radio, and then there's seven portables left over at that point, and then those would be in the frontline positions. And I think we'd have one or two spares at that point. So we'd have, it'd be two at Station 1, and then three at Station 2, five, and then the chief six, so then we'd have one spare.
And so then everybody would be basically operating with the same equipment?
Correct, correct. There's seven radios that we purchased in 2017. They were the Apex 6000s. They're actually a upgrade from what we're requesting. So, but the majority of members would all have these Apex 4000s. Those are the ones that we have 12 right now. And then if we purchased 15 more, then we'd have 27 of them.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Alderman Porter, then Alderman Brereton?
Yeah, I was just gonna add, you might want to add to Alderman Snow's motion that we are specifically using the ARPA funds for these radios then.
Correct, yes. Alderman Brereton, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I just don't know that I'm a real big fan of deviating from the initial plan that was already planned, so that's all.
I think it's, you know, important to note that we put capital projects in place for a reason. I understand there's a potentially 10% cost savings. I will say that the ARPA funds, although they could be used for most anything, I guess I would wonder about, we have gotten by so far being on a capital plan to purchase 15 radios over the next three budget cycles. And if we don't do that, how does that affect? How do we, how do we, I mean, I understand the cost savings will be 10%, but then also as a radio's age, we're gonna require getting 15 radios or whatever that we purchased that potentially could be out of service or that would need to be replaced at one time. I think sometimes a capital plan takes, you know, the purchase of whatever equipment we do with that in mind, just like a fire truck, just like a, just like any other apparatus. But I guess what I'm asking you is what's the significance of it regarding, you know, it wasn't in the budget, it was staggered over three budgets, but what's the significance to that? If you could clue us in, help us out.
What I was thinking of tonight, when I was thinking about this, is, you know, the five that we budgeted for, to buy right away, that we need those, and then we know next year, we're going to be purchasing those. And because of the budget process, that we wouldn't be hit by a price increase. So, and then I agree, we were going to, another year from now, look at five more. My recommendation, if we could somehow get the 10 before the price increase, because then we're honoring last year's budget. And then what we're planning on doing, I understand the budget's not formally approved for the capital expenditure for next year. But what I can say is that the extrication tools that we didn't buy were $19,000. And so we have $19,000 unused in our capital budget. That would absorb, the 19 plus 11, I think, would absorb 26, 9, or close to it. So I would strongly consider, since we're kind of in between two fiscal years, is to still, on those five that are in the distant future, although it'd be nice to save money right now. But then again, all 15 would come, do all at the same time, and we might be a little bit stuck like that, so you gotta pros and cons there. But if somehow we could approve the 10 for purchase before the May 9th price increase, would be my suggestion.
Captain Shadell, a couple of quick questions. Number one is, whatever the number is, five or 10 or 15, can the supplier invoice the city prior to May 1, 2022, so it falls within the current fiscal year budget?
I was in contact with Dave Carter of the Orange River Services. He assured me that he can get the invoice again by May 1. When I contacted him on April 7th, it was under pretense of first reading and second reading, and having those radios on this budget.
Okay. Which then raises the issue, so the council understands, if you're taking the five radios that are, I believe, currently budgeted next year in the capital budget, applying to this year's budget, that does free up funds, not a lot, but some funds in next year's budget that can be used for other purposes if you wish.
Alderman Snow?
So the reason the plan was, if I recall correctly, was to mitigate the initial cost and spread it out. But we do have the ARPA funds to be able to use this. We already had budgeted $11,000, and it's now at 13. Next year, it'll be 15 plus, and the year after that, it'll be 17 plus. So it's not, you know, I think exponentially, we're in much better shape, and it gives the first-line people the equipment they need.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Freeman?
Thank you, Mayor. So I believe that Ms. Hanson said we have until December 2024 to use those funds. Radios aren't the only thing that's gonna increase in price, and I think that those funds are meant for something more pressing than something we already have in our capital budget. So having said that, I think that being how, you know, today is April 11th, and our new budget starts May 1st, I don't think that asking for next year's right now is that big of an ask to save that money. So I would be, I would say, you know, we can do next year's capital now, but as far as all three, I don't think that's a good idea.
Okay. Any other comments regarding the motion that we have on the floor currently, I believe is for 15 radios? Alderman Brereton, sorry?
Thanks again, Mayor. Any possibility of any grants covering any of this equipment?
It's possible. We applied for a FEMA grant last year. If you guys remember, I came and talked to you guys about asking for that countywide grant. So it's possible. Last year, we tried for the small equipment grant, grant to get that extrication equipment. We didn't get that. There's always the possibility of, 100% possibility of applying for a grant, but receiving a grant is a different story. Thank you.
Alderman Fleury?
Thank you. You tell me, the radios that we're replacing with the Apex 4000, how old are the current radios that you're using that need to be replaced?
So right now, the different radios we have, the oldest ones are HT-1250s. Those radios, if you talk radio generations, they are probably four to five generations old. Those are the ones we phased out a few years ago when we purchased the eight APX 4000s. Then we purchased four after that to get everybody where we had enough radios for the guys on shift and enough radios for anybody that came in on a general recall on a confirmed structure fire. Then with the seven APX 6000s, those we purchased in 2012 or 2015, which we're still using. But the main thing is, we used to have where every firefighter had a radio in their pocket that they were responsible for, similar to what the police department does. And with the HT-1250s, they were aging out. Repair-wise, there weren't, the repairs, we couldn't get done to them. The batteries were aging out, and they were expensive to replace the batteries on them. So we phased down to just having on-duty personnel having a radio and enough radios for the people that came in on a general recall. What this would do, would get a radio back in every firefighter's pocket, so when we do a training burn, just for example, we did a training at the tower at North Boone Fire District 3 in Popular Grove. One of the individuals was using an HT-1250, and the battery died while he was inside the structure, and we could not contact him. So that made it a live May day, which is, in firefighter terms, a bad situation. We lost a firefighter, we could not contact him, so we went into a situation where we were looking for him. If we got back to where he had a radio in everybody's pocket, there's a vested interest in them to maintain and take care of their radio. They changed the battery in it. Right now, we have three spare batteries that we switch out at each station in the morning. Right now, there's five guys at Station 2. So we're making sure everybody's got a fresh charged battery in the morning to make sure we've got a radio that lasts us 24 hours. So mainly to answer your question, it's the HT-1250s that we're basically phasing out, where everybody had, when I started in 2015, we all had those. And then '17 and '18, we made it so it was just the guys on duty had a radio.
Thank you.
Okay, Alderman Stevens?
The HT-1250s? I was carrying one of them when I was on the department over 12 years ago. That's how old they are.
All right, so any other questions before we call this question for the? Sure? Pardon me?
Motion to amend.
Oh, this is on, okay, this is?
This is the motion to amend.
Right, there's already a motion to amend, right.
Okay, so this is the motion to amend, which amends this to increase to 15 radios. So this is on the amendment motion. All those in favor will answer yes. Those opposed, no, when their name is called, when the clerk calls a roll.
Fleury?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Nay.
McGee?
Nay.
Mohal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Brather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Brereton?
No.
Seven in favor?
Okay, motion to amend passes.
It's crazy the sounds, you have to vote on the amendment motion.
Yes, I know. So you guys will vote again, so. The motion on the floor then is to purchase 15 radios, the APX 4000 radios, for using, using ARPA funds, the budgeted amount. What is that, what is that amount, Shannon? Out of the capital?
Out of the capital, or what?
Out of the capital.
Captain gave for the total of the 15 radios?
$13,477.10 will be, and 10 cents will be out of the existing capital.
Correct.
The remainder, $27,000 approximately, will be from ARPA funds, correct?
And Mr. Mayor, just before you do vote, please take note that, was this, this was not because of a single source provider, we have to use the same provider for all our radios, which means now that we're over the $20,000 threshold, you'll be needing to take a motion to waive the bidding requirements before you vote on this next week.
Next week.
Did it have it in there? I didn't hear that, it's part of the motion, I apologize.
Okay. Before we do, Alderman Freeman, please.
So this vote is to use funds that we didn't budget for, and then have all of our fire radios expire at the same time in the future, when we don't probably have extra funds in the budget, to replace them all at once. So that's what we're voting on right now.
That's the motion that's in front of the council, is for 15 radios. Yes. That'll be what the Alderman get a chance to vote, up or down? Alderman Porter?
Look, I'm just, I'm not that good in math, I'm trying to do this in my head. So we're basically, am I correct in saying that by doing this right now, we're saving the taxpayer's about $6,000 due to the price increase?
Yep. Plus thereabouts, thereabouts. Alderman Fle, Alderman Fleury?
Thank you. So right now, I mean, we... Thank you. So right now, I mean, we, you knew last year that the radios were out of date and needed to be replaced completely, but because it's such a large expense, it's spread out in the capital fund over three years. So I think that by purchasing all the radios now isn't going to, all of a sudden, all the radios are going to break in five years. At whatever point, whether you spread it out over five years or spread it over three years, the radios are going to break when they break and you're going to need to replace them. So I think purchasing fifteen now isn't going to affect the long-term plan. However, like you said, firefighter about, you know, right now, there's radios that don't work and, you know, you know, someone, we lost contact. It was a training exercise, but what if that same radio would have been in a fire? So, you know, I think that's important that we replace them all now. And I see that, yes, obviously, we talked about a capital fund, but since it's our ARPA funds, it makes sense to buy them all now, like Alderman Porter said, to save the money right now, where we all have the radios that are going to be operational and take care of our firefighters that are putting our lives on the line each day to make sure they're safe.
Okay, thank you. Alderwoman Frank?
Just real short, I just wanted to say that sometimes technology gets better so that maybe the next time that we need them, we might have to pay more, but they might be better. Would that be safe to say that they would work and be compatible with the ones that we had? And maybe they might be improved?
That's honestly a good consideration. As far as technology, we're only talking one-year difference because we're thinking of next year's radios and then we're thinking the year. So I would say that as far as technology and a year and a half from now is basically all we're talking about. It wouldn't, there probably wouldn't be an additional change for that.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions before we call the vote? All right. Oh, Alderman Burden?
Thanks again, Mayor. Yeah, I just got a quick comment. I mean, we don't, we don't have crystal ball or anything, so we don't know that the radios could all break at the same time or all break separate times. Because I'm thinking, just look at like an operating system. I'm not real familiar what these things run on, but say they just call quits on the operating system, boom, you know? So it could theoretically happen.
Okay. All right, whatever your pleasure is, you'll have a chance to vote. Those in favor, vote aye for the motion on the floor to purchase the fifteen radios. Thirteen thousand, four seventy-seven out of this year's budget and the remaining twenty-seven thousand, approximately. We'll bring that figure exactly to the next meeting. Out of the ARPA funds, those in favor say aye when their name is called. Those opposed will say no.
Frank? Freeman?
No.
McGee?
Nay.
Mahal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Brereton?
No.
Fleury?
Aye.
Six in favor?
Okay, motion passed and we will have that at the meeting next week. Okay, item F, 23 Budget and Discussion. We had brought that back here. Sure. Let's take five minutes. We'll reconvene shortly after, quarter after eight. Thank you. All right, let's continue. I'm sure everybody's got somewhere to be probably this evening. So we're gonna go ahead and, we're gonna go ahead and, go ahead and continue with the agenda. Item F, 23 Budget and Discussion. So we put this on the agenda to open this up for any discussion before we get to next week. Ms. Hanson?
Thank you. Over the past month, a draft budget for FY23 has been presented in each line item reviewed and discussed. A budget ordinance was presented for first reading last week and a public hearing and second reading will take place on April 18th. This evening is an opportunity for additional discussions and follow-up questions. Any proposed changes to the budget can be made on April 18th after the second reading and must be in the form of a motion. A memo will be provided to you tonight and again next week containing suggested wording for any motions. If there are any line items you wish to amend, please consider submitting them in advance by email so we can compile all possible motions prior to the public hearing and second reading.
Okay. Excuse me, thank you. Ms. Hanson, Alderman Burden?
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion tonight that line item 01-5-610-6840, Economic and Business Development Growth Dimensions, be adjusted to match the county's contribution of $15,000.
And as was just mentioned by the Finance Director, motions to amend the budget will have to be made at second reading. Doing it tonight doesn't do any good.
Okay, well, this, I tried to make this motion last time and I got talked out of it. So the motion is to direct the Finance Director to make this change.
And again, because first readings aren't even had, it can't be done by, by the council at second reading.
I disagree.
Alderman Snow?
And I think that's why we're here tonight is so we can discuss it. So we can, he's made a motion, but by, we could all discuss whether we agree or disagree. Is that a fair assumption that we're, that's why we're here is to discuss it?
Yeah, I think the assumption would be that anything that's going to come in the form of a motion at the appropriate time would be up for debate or discussion. Any alderman can bring that forward this evening and this would be the appropriate time. So, yeah, I mean, I would think that it should be in the form of a discussion and then if it follows with a motion, it would be, it would be at the appropriate time.
Well, I have plenty of discussion, but I'd like to make the motion to initiate the discussion.
You can have, yeah, that's fine. Sure. We can do, we can do that. You can, we can discuss whatever. That's the, that's the purpose of the meeting tonight. So any, anybody who has anything with the budget, any questions, any concerns, can bring them up now. So the floor is yours.
I made a motion. Can we get a second so we can discuss?
You have a second? Okay, so we have a motion, a second on the floor for discussion for the budget going forward for this evening. All those in favor?
Oh, perfect. Aye.
Yes. Did you? Oh, okay, go ahead.
So I would strongly disagree. I would leave the budget as it's currently. Tying this in with whatever the county's doing, which has much more financial issues than the city, and we have a bigger investment, if nothing else, because we gain a lot more by the activities of growth dimensions. On a side note, as an individual, I joined last October and invested money myself. So in that regard, it's investing the taxpayers' money that pay my salary from the city. So I think it's a worthy endeavor and I don't see defunding it is the proper way to go.
Okay, I guess then after that, let's try this again. He had a motion here for some further discussion regarding that. Maybe I got the cart in front of the horse. Did you have a comment, Alderwoman? Frank, go ahead.
My concern is that as a city, we're part of the county, so we pay as being part of the county and then we pay again as part of the city. So aren't we double taxed? And then are we part of the District 100? We pay into them. So is that three times? And if we're part of the township, is that four times that we pay in as a taxpayer?
So then we want to have this discussion here. We want to have this discussion. That was what the motion in the second was on the floor. So I'll call, we'll call this thing and then we can move on with the discussion. Is that fair enough, everybody, for any discussion?
Well, don't we have discussion before a vote?
Well, his motion was for to be able even just to have a discussion here this evening. Is that right?
The motion was that we adjust this to $15,000 to match the county.
That motion isn't, I don't, I don't believe that motion is, I don't believe this is the proper place for that motion. Is that...
Mayor, with all due respect, I've never been told that you can't make a motion in a committee of the whole.
Once and I just, before the City Council, after first reading, only the City Council can amend that ordinance. This is not the City Council. This is a committee of the whole. Whatever you vote on tonight, yeah, you can make the motion tonight and you can vote on it, but the motion would have to be made at City Council during second reading to amend that ordinance. The committee cannot amend an ordinance either that's in effect or that's pending before the City Council.
The motion is that Director Hanson adjusts the line item to match the county's contribution of $15,000. It's a direction for her to adjust it and bring it back to us.
And again, that can, she can make the adjustment, but that adjustment will not be in that ordinance unless there's a motion to amend at second reading. That's the only place it can occur because it's had a first reading already.
Seems to work fine with everything else we've done.
We've never done that, what you're suggesting, since I've been here since 2003.
So I can't make a motion to get the director to change? I don't believe this. I don't believe it.
It's my understanding that we can have a, you know, we can have a discussion here regarding that and then moving forward, any amendment would be at that, at that time. However, it would read, that would be the appropriate time. But the discussion on whatever you want to talk about, anybody wants to talk about regarding the budget, that's what, that's what I would like to do. Alderman Burden?
Okay, thanks, Mayor. Then I have a few pages.
Okay.
Things to say here.
I think we could start that out that way, unless there's any objection. We have a pending motion, pending motion on the floor. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
So then the motion was just passed to get the director to adjust it?
No, no, the motion was for...
It's a motion I made, but I'll go ahead and read what I have. With all due respect, I don't mean to, but it's quite frustrating.
No, I do think that it would be appropriate, appropriate then to bring back a motion, you know, at the proper time and the council will do as they would here anytime this evening. They would hear it, but it would be in the proper, it would be at the proper time. And there's nothing preventing, as far as I know, when I sat on the council, I don't think, I don't think that was ever done that I can recall, but I do rely on the legal council to correct me if I'm wrong. But we are here to discuss, so that's what we'll do. Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you. So I guess I'm a little confused as to why would we, what's the point if, like, why don't we just wait until the second reading and discuss in motion, like? Like, you know, so we're just gonna be talking, but we can't do anything with what we're talking about until a second reading?
Well, you can't, you can't do that officially, but you can discuss anything, your feelings about it. It certainly doesn't, won't require a motion to change or amend the budget, but it will be an opportunity for anybody who has anything that gives them heartburn about the budget, about the budget, about the, about the items in the budget. You can certainly discuss it now, and then at the appropriate time, bring it forth in a, in a motion.
It does a couple of things. Gives the committee of the whole, which let's face this, it's the same people that's on the City Council, the ability to discuss the matter in more open format without the formal rules necessarily of the second reading. The second thing it does is if there seems to be a majority of the committee of the whole that says we don't like the way it's drafted and presented for second reading, we want to change something, it gives the Finance Director the ability to prepare for that so that she has the numbers in her role and perhaps even change language. It would not be effective until it's presented and voted on at second reading, but allows your Finance Director and your mayor to be prepared for that.
Alderman Snow?
Which I'm assuming is what Ms. Hanson was trying to say is that from tonight's discussions, forward her any motions that you might want to make so that everybody's on the same sheet of music when the time comes, that we all know what the motion's going to be, and we're not trying to revise it in different directions, just to, for instance, the growth dimensions. If we can iron out that, yes, either we are gonna go forward with our current budget or somebody wants to come up with a dollar amount. If we all, in our discussions, come up with a new dollar amount, she has, can put together a motion to that effect and have quasi-numbers adjusted on the side for that. Is that a fair assumption?
Yeah, I think that is a fair assessment that, you know, whatever you may contemplate making a motion on, that was the purpose of Ms. Hanson's discussion. Get that to us. If the motion's made, it'll be voted on accordingly. But regarding any discussion or, you know, anything regarding the budget, right now is, right now is the time to do it. So I would turn the floor over to anybody who has any discussions, as I said, any heartburn, any problems, any issues about what they may think this budget either fails to do or, or they would, they would like to give Ms. Hanson and myself a heads up on what that will look like next, as we, when we do have a motion on the floor. So Alderman Burden, I would, you know, turn the floor over to you if that's okay.
Thanks, Mayor, and appreciate that. Don't mean to cause any trouble, just trying to save the taxpayers some money. So initially, this recommendation came from the county administration recommending a cut, quote, "A cut to growth dimensions as their fund balance is sufficient enough to maintain operations for the upcoming year," end quote. The full county board then voted to approve this recommendation after hearing the same arguments. The county's main concern being that growth dimensions has too much money in reserves and compared it, for example, to like the building department's stockpiling funds. It was mentioned growth dimension sits on at least a year's worth of reserves while the entire city of Belvidere is expected to maintain three to six months' worth of reserves. Other county concerns that were mentioned, if you watch the meetings involving these discussions, concern of lack of data concerning the return on investment. And alls that we heard there were excuses on why we can't measure success. So then someone on the board even suggested you could take the number of parcels available in Boone County, see how many of them growth dimensions has marketed, and then find out basically what the conversion rate is. So at that meeting, John Wolf said they'd work on that, so I just wondered, have you guys worked on that? Ask later or something. So, yeah, I was gonna say, it's not much different than the insurance agency. You know, somebody comes into the office for a quote, you either convert the quote to a sale or you don't. Another concern, the board members wanted to see focus on other industries rather than just industrial all the time. Just notes here, another concern was they don't think growth dimensions possibly is aggressive enough. So then I went ahead and emailed Pam requesting a copy of growth dimensions budget, which I did receive, thank you. But then I was asked not to share it publicly, even though these are taxpayer dollars involved. Then I was sent a second email requesting me to sign some sort of waiver, but I didn't sign it. Growth dimensions is asking the city of Belvidere for $55,000. So then growth dimensions brought in three representatives to speak last week, none of whom which live in the city of Belvidere, none of which who contribute to the tax dollars toward this financial request. So I think it's really great that growth dimensions has people to come and represent them, but if everybody's representing growth dimensions, who represents the average Joe on the street? Who represents the taxpayer? Is anybody going to? So then when we ask for a list of growth dimensions accomplishments, we often hear about the Rock Valley campus, Stellantis, Project Kelly, and I figured a Dairy Queen, but I guess they're not involved in that. Personally, I believe there were a lot more politics involved in bringing Rock Valley to Belvidere rather than just growth dimensions. And when we talk about Stellantis, aren't we in the middle of yet another layoff? Then we mentioned Project Kelly and Dairy Queen, whatever, they aren't here yet. So, so all of this is based on future promises, not results. And here are my own concerns. Oh, yeah, so we, so I did a little research. Growth dimensions is not current on their filings of their 990s. Don't know why. Concern about the number of employees keeps going up, and I know there are some other people that feel the same. The salaries appear to be skyrocketing out of control. And as Alderman Frank mentioned, as both a city and county taxpayer, so I'm paying this at least twice. And I don't even know who else contributes, is it the township, the school district? Maybe I'm paying this three or four times. I'd be interested in seeing growth dimensions lease. I'd be interested in seeing growth dimensions bylaws. And I believe City Code, Division 2, Grant Receipt, Section 2-580, Annual Reporting, says any entity shall provide all of these documents that we should have. The main, my main focus really is not to pick on growth dimensions. It's not. It, you know, I came into this and it's like, we, we keep not raising the tax levy. We're keeping it zero. We're gonna have to raise this tax levy. We have bills to pay. You know, this is a way to save money for this budget, and if we can save some money on this budget, you know, I would, I would feel good. It's just kind of chicken scratch here. You know, City Hall has bills too. Yeah, like I said, this is our last chance. And then I was just, I'm gonna read a quick letter that I got this morning, because I believe it is related. So, so a constituent had some questions and concerns for the executive director. So this is the constituent writing. So they say, "You keep mentioning these open and closed projects in your presentations. Where do these projects come from? I feel economic development primarily consists of attracting new businesses to Boone County. What new development can you claim as a win from your efforts? Were these wins enterprise zone projects? All enterprise zone applications go through your office for Boone County. If your office didn't process these applications for businesses, how many of those wins would you actually be able to call yours? The county used to process the enterprise zone applications. What year did growth dimensions start handling these for the county and why? What is the application revenue you received for doing this over the past years? Why hasn't the county taken this back to keep the revenue in-house? You are a nonprofit organization, not government. Why is your office located in the mayor's suite in City Hall, giving the impression that you are part of the city? How many years have you been in City Hall? Was this supposed to be temporary? What is your rent cost? Has it always been the same amount? What does that rent cover? Boardroom use, phones, internet, utilities? Two private offices for you and Heather? Reception space, storage space, and the loading dock? Why did the county cut your funding? Lack of development? Not a good enough return on investment? John Wolf mentioned on April 4th that your organization strives to keep one year of operational budget in the bank for emergencies. Over the last two years, we have seen businesses and organizations take the biggest financial hit ever. You claimed in your presentation on April 4th that as a 501(c)(6) organization, you did not receive any COVID assistance. What is the amount in that reserve account at this time? Why wasn't any of that money used over the last two very difficult years? Tax dollars took a big hit due to COVID, yet growth dimensions still collected the same amount of money from the county and the city. This person also then went on to say, "I am also just dumbfounded that anyone, especially working for a nonprofit, would receive a $20,000 raise over such a short timeframe. I haven't seen any major wins that would warrant that kind of increase." And then just one more point. They wanted to say that Project Kelly is located in an enterprise zone. So for easy math purposes, if this is a $10 million project, growth dimensions would get $50,000 just for processing the application. The application fee is .005 times the total project cost for doing nothing. How is the county okay with letting all that money continually go to someone else? If everybody's here to represent growth dimensions, I hope somebody's here to represent taxpayers. Thank you.
Okay. I do have growth dimensions in the audience here this evening. If the council would like to hear from them, that's up to you. If they would come, would want to come and address some of these concerns, I think that's probably appropriate. So, is there any objection from the council? Hearing no objections. Welcome, Pam.
Thank you. I'm trying to write down some of your questions so I can address them. As far as the 990, according to the site, it's not updated. Salaries skyrocketing on the 990, it actually, it identifies reportable compensation. Reportable compensation includes anything that is provided to the individual as part of their compensation. For instance, growth dimensions employees don't get healthcare benefits. We don't have a healthcare program. So the board provides us with a stipend for healthcare so we can get our own healthcare. That is considered income. We also get a match for retirement, which is called simple IRA. And it depends on what the employee contributes as part of that, and that also is considered as part of that 990. So in the time, also, you know, some of the reasons that we had some money into those, those accounts of savings was because we didn't have staff. We were, we didn't have an executive director over a period of time. So that, over a period of time, while the board members contributed their time and resources, that's what took, increased the amount, what was available in our reserves. It's not a million dollars. It's, it is about a year's worth of our budget, actually a little bit less. If you look at some of the compensation that's available, I don't know if you looked at other organizations, other economic development organizations, we are far below. Executive directors typically get over about $250,000 a year. So we're pretty much on the lower side of that. If you, we do pay for rent here. We pay $6,000 per year. We also contribute to drinking water for the, the facility. We provided equipment room, equipment for the conference room so staff can participate in Zoom meetings. We actually took the storage room that we had and we created an office out it, and that's where Heather's located, so we paid for an office build-out. And we provide technical assistance for Zoom and as well as a greeter for the, the office. While, you know, I, you know, I don't know how growth dimensions came here. Maybe it was evitacious to both. But I have to say that our close relationship and working with the city, it's quite often that I have to work with various departments of the city of Belvidere, and I think that it's been evitacious for them to work with us. Worked very closely with the mayor on projects like Project Kelly, which spoke earlier, General Mills. We've worked very close and engaged with them, and it's not something that we just talk about once a day. It's something that we constantly are working on, connecting, identifying some of the fine points and some of the details that need to go into the annexation agreement and such. Trying to think of some of the other questions that you might have had. You know, I, you know, the mayor and the former mayor, all the mayors are the, are representing your best interest and your investment on our board. So, and they approve our budget. They approve our activities. They are, receive information about our projects. Our projects come from various resources. I use this analogy, like, it's like buying a house. Why do you buy a house? I mean, is it because you had a great salesperson? Is it because the building, the size, the location? It could be because it was what your family wanted. It's because the, you know, there's so many different factors, and I can't say that this contributed to this. We, we are not brokers. We don't just market property. We work with brokers to market property. We work with, we market outside the area. We don't always market inside the area. So a lot of our time is spent in trying to draw those relationships to this area, make, allow people to understand what this community has to offer. And I think we elevated that over the past few years quite a bit, and you can see that by the kind of attention that we're getting, the number of projects that are coming to Belvidere and Boone County, and the attention that we're getting at a state and local level. And we also work on trying to retain businesses here. That's another large part of our job. And through COVID, that was probably one of the hardest jobs that we had. We tried to make sure that was a safe environment, that they were getting the resources they need. We talked to the, you know, the state. We tried to get the funding here. No, because we were a 501(c)(6), we weren't qualified to apply for any resources, whereas a number of other organizations were. I'm trying to think if I kind of addressed some of those questions.
Well, the first question was when John Wolf acknowledged somebody's suggestion on the parcels, basically a conversion rate. That was back in September, so have you guys worked on that?
So we don't get all that information. So let's say if we have a company that's coming in, that we brought in, and they're leasing, they're not buying. We don't know what the, the value is of that location. We don't know, sometimes that information is not privy to us about what their arrangement are as with the leaseholder. So if we have information about their, then we can pull up their tax information about if they purchased something. But it's, it gets really difficult, and it's a lot of manual time in order to find that, and it's phone calls, and sometimes, like I said- and it's phone calls, and sometimes, like I said, sometimes we can't get the information. It's not available to us.
Well, it might not be available, but John did say he'd work on this because I think there's a way to measure any statistic. If you look at baseball, like, I mean, you know, so there's a way to measure the success, and we should see the results beforehand in over $55,000.
There's a lot of other ways that we show our success.
Pam, I did have somebody that talked to me about being double taxed, maybe quadruple taxed. Can you tell us about that?
Well, as I mentioned before, only 28% of our total budget comes from the public sector, and it comes from different groups. It comes from the city, the county, township, school district, and, you know, village. So they come from different resources, and those taxing bodies get taxed for a particular reason. So, I mean, I can't tell you that they're being double taxed. That's you as taxpayers, I mean, the money goes to you. So if they're being taxed, isn't it coming, I don't know, it's coming to the taxing body? So I don't know how to answer that, quite honestly.
I might have a way to do it. Because I've used that very same analogy in the past for situations where, for example, the county was required to perform a service for the entire county. And it's an expensive service, but it's the county responsibility to provide that service for the entire county, the cities in the county. They come to the city and say, "We want the city to give us money to pay for the service that we have to do for the entire county," thinking of the dog shelter or dog facility years and years and years ago. And my opinion back then was, you have this responsibility to perform this service for the entire county. All the citizens of the entire county are paying for that service already, so then the city would be paying twice for it. That's a county-required service. This is more akin to, for example, the build-out of the Irene Road Interchange. This is a situation where different units of government join together to cooperatively fund a service, somebody else's service, that's being performed for the entire region. So it's more of a cooperative venture between the county and the city, not statutory required, not a taxing situation. It's what do we need to do to pool our resources to get the most bang for all of our bucks to get that service? And that's up to the council and the board to decide how much each entity should be pitching in for that. But it's not really a double taxation issue in my mind. It's the county and the city join together to procure a service, or in this case, join a partner to provide a service for the entire region.
I know it was mentioned regarding the arrangements. I think one of Alderman Burden's comments was the arrangements. I don't know what that arrangement, I don't know how long that arrangement has been in place. I've been here since May regarding office space or what have you. I know the lease agreement, I believe, is $6,000 a year. But how the arrangement was made about, that was prior to my coming into office here. So I couldn't answer that, I didn't know if you could or not.
No, I, you know, I know that they initially were in the old bank building off State Street. And I know when they downsized, they just didn't need the size, and I think there was something negotiated. And again, it was before my time as well, so I don't know what the reasons were underlying that.
Fair enough, thank you. Any other? Alderwoman Freeman.
Thank you. So Pam, you and I have had conversations about what I see as our differing visions for Belvidere. You focus more on the industrial side, where I was always focused on retail, entertainment, commercial, enhancing the quality of life for our residents here. And you said you need rooftops to bring in that type of stuff. You need the industrial first. I always thought that it was a huge mistake to put all of our eggs in the Stellantis basket when our previous mayor would brag about how we got all the suppliers, they, "We got them all, we got them all." Well, what happens if Stellantis isn't here? Now we have empty factories and a whole lot of jobs lost. So, you know, although I appreciate your work trying to keep Stellantis here, there is no guarantee that, at all, they have not, they guaranteed Canada that they would invest $4 billion into electric cars up there. They did not guarantee Illinois anything. So we basically took a lot of $30 an hour jobs, and through state incentives, reduced them to $17 an hour jobs, in my view. The thing I need, you know, kind of, John Wolfe, what is in it for the board? Are they paid? Do they have stock? Do they, there's nothing in it for them? It's completely voluntary? They're not invested?
They invest their money into businesses. The ones who came here actually had businesses or provided a service to Belvidere. So that's why they came to speak on behalf of their business. So they contribute as investors, and they want to see this community grow. See, economic development is not something, like I said, you don't get a service, you don't pay for something, you don't get a service. That's, you know, more like a chamber organization, whereas economic growth takes time. Project Kelly, which is General Mills, we've been working since last year to come here. And as you mentioned, to try to diversify. You know, we don't have a lot of, you know, of the distribution centers, yet we're working with this one, we're working with another one that we've had a lot of close conversations with. We, that's, the amount of traffic that that's going to generate will bring more people utilizing our services. So where you get the most taxable income is when you, when you get people from the outside using the services here, deciding to move here for jobs, when you have companies that are bringing product here and then they're selling them outside. That's how these things are generated. So the traffic patterns, the amount of residents, these are the educational levels, these are things that, your restaurants, your entertainment centers, they look at schools, they look at your, you know, what's education programs that you have, you know, are they attracting the, you know, young people, the audience that we're trying to serve? So these are the things that some of those businesses look at, and that's what we're trying to do, is generate that traffic. Because right now, we can't, we don't have that argument until we can say, "Oh, you know what? We do have that amount of traffic that comes through. We do have youth, a pipeline of young people in our community. We have a workforce. We, you know, we're trying to identify what those things are for them to tell that story."
So I have my own thoughts on why it's difficult or impossible to get investors to come here, and I actually gave a speech about it down here once. That aside, so you guys have been in business here since 1979. John Wolfe has basically owned the whole north side of Belvidere since I can remember, the land, and he wanted nothing more than to develop it. His whole vision for Belvidere was to bring it north. He was unable to do that as part of Growth Dimensions. So what makes him think, now that he doesn't own that land anymore, that that's going to happen? First of all, is a question that I have racked my brain trying to figure out, and do you just wait for people to come to you and say, "What kind of land do you have? What kind of..." Or are you actually out there marketing for, I mean, do you, I appreciate Project Kelly, but, you know, did you say to General Mills, "Hey, would you like to expand? We have this land, what do you think about it?" Or did General Mills approach you and say, "We're looking for a spot, we already have a plant here, what do you got?"
Okay. So I shared some of this information last week. General Mills actually came to us because we already had an established relationship with them. We were working with the company and trying to help them with the workforce needs, trying to address some of their equipment needs or their pipeline through the enterprise zone. We provided them with resources, information for the supply chain. So we provided them, we had a really close relationship with them. They, the person here locally had said to their main set, understanding what their logistical plan was, they said, "You really need to talk to Pam." So that's when they reached out to me. At that time, they were looking at multiple locations in Illinois and outside of Illinois. They asked me to provide them with some properties that were available to meet their needs. I provided that, provided, based on what their criteria was, and I provided them with some additional information that they didn't ask me. And as they mentioned, this was a great location because of the logistical advantage. Well, I did some research, I did, you know, we identified where their other plants were, what the timeframe was to get to those locations, how we were better compared than other locations were. I went above and beyond to provide them with that information so they could, so they would be interested in our site. And then we made the one of two sites that they, then we negotiated some terms with them over a period of the past year. So that's how that came to be.
I appreciate, you know, some of your efforts, you know, though we do have different visions. And I'm like, they've been here since 79, and this is what we have. It's disappointing to me. By the cutting your funding in half, and if the city were to match the county's funding, that would not put you out of business, that would not make you fold up shop and leave Belvidere, right?
Not today. But I do have to say, it would be devastating. We would, we're actually in the process of starting a strategic plan, and we would really have to look at our staffing and our services. And, you know, you can't, we're dipping into our budget. Actually, a few years ago, my board allowed me to hire a third person. We were running on two people for a number of years, hire a third person to help us. We brought a lot of that marketing in-house to provide, and I tell you, the quality is so much better than if I was to do the marketing. Or, and the cost was a lot better, too, to outsource marketing is extremely expensive. So we felt that this was a good investment, but we do have to dip in the reserves every year. And our intent was, we can only do that for so many years, and then we needed to decide whether or not we can afford a third person. So I'll be perfectly honest, something would have to give. I, you know, and I don't know how we would be able to, you know, function at the level that we do with reduced funding like that.
I'll yield at this time.
Thank you, Alderman Stone.
So to reiterate, it is a public-private enterprise that funds this. And as I see it, if you, in my eyes, with the county going, eh, we're going to cut our budget because we just don't think it's worthy, they're showing disinterest, and that has ramifications with all your contributors, I would assume. You have, it is a public-private, and when you start dropping the public out, you're, I would assume that your private people are going to say, "Well, apparently the city really doesn't care," and it's going to be a cascading effect. That would be my projection.
And they already have. I've had a number of private sector that have come to us after the county's vote and said, "If public sector doesn't invest in economic development, why should we invest here?" I would be perfectly frank, and that wasn't the first time I heard it, I've heard it a number of times. And I, you know, I, how do you address that, you know? Although, you know, focusing on other things. And you mentioned enterprise zone. Usually we, the cost to run the enterprise zone program, and actually, we're the manager on behalf of the county, as well as the city, it costs us nearly $80,000 a year in equipment, technology, time, project, for instance, like this with Project Kelly. Not only will be working with the company, we would also be working with their contractor and all the subcontractors. That could be up to 100 subcontractors that we have to work with. We get a list from them, we have to identify what they'll be, their role will be, what their investment will be, what their building costs will be, and then we have to apply or make sure that that falls within the categories allowable for the enterprise zone. Then we have to enter it into a system, and then we have to manage that over a period of time, see if they're on target as far as time dates and project cost. And then that information gets reported back to the state. We have to constantly go back over to the individuals, all those little entities, and find out, and make sure that they're closing that. Otherwise, they don't get the enterprise zone benefits. So this is very time-consuming, and in the same time, then we report it to our taxing bodies about this success, and then we hold the meetings on a quarterly basis with the taxing bodies. We attend meetings at the state level to make sure that we're on target. We're constantly in contact with the Department of Revenue to make sure that we are providing allowable activities, and this is just the local enterprise zone. Remember, there's other grants. There's other grants that we're talking about. As we were talking about the I Doc grant, the DCEO grants, the, you know, there's so many other grants that we have to help support, apply for, and engage with.
Alderman Burden.
Thanks again, Mayor, I really appreciate it. So I think part of the reason the county pulled out was due to lack of results. I've mentioned it. So where are the results? And I'll reiterate in this question here. What new development can you claim as a win from your efforts?
We, as I mentioned, there's every win. If you see your tax, the revenues going up, I believe that that's showing that we're winning, that we're either, people are noticing because we're marketing, that they're locating here, that there's an increase in jobs here.
Okay, but can you point to a specific project or business that you brought here?
Yes, there's a company out on Industrial Drive, and I apologize, Heather. Yeah, there was Yangfang, but even after that, there's, I apologize, you get me off the hand, but, you know, when you're managing 60-some projects that are open, it's kind of difficult to remember a lot of the details, but I'd be glad to provide you with some.
If there's 60 projects, it'd be nice if we could get one result.
Well, I gave you three the last meeting.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Yes, I'm sorry.
Wouldn't a lot of the, when you've been instrumental in a lot of the suppliers for Chrysler at that point, come in?
Yes, that's correct. And this could, if we do get a project with Stellantis, then we could possibly get additional other businesses like battery, EV-related supply chain. And it could also mean that the current businesses that are here will also invest.
My question isn't necessarily specific for Pam, but as I'm sitting here and hearing more about how she has, and her office has so much involvement within the city, I guess I'd like to hear from the people within City Hall who do work with Pam and Growth Dimensions to see how your experience has been and how pivotal you think that the Growth Dimensions office is in your day-to-day activities. So Mayor, why don't I start with you? What are your thoughts?
Well, I think you've heard me talk about this before. I think what you have here tonight for discussion, you'd also heard me say during the previous discussion when an Alderman, Alderman Burden had brought this up regarding the disparity in government funding. I think you had heard me say that I think that's fair, that's certainly fair to question that, and I think it is. I also have said that I don't have the staff, and I don't have the time. And I've said this publicly, so I'm not telling you anything now that you probably haven't heard before, that I don't have the time nor that I don't have the time, nor do I have the resources to make the connections that's necessary to bring a Project Kelly, potentially some of the other projects that are going to be, that I believe, and I really believe this, I think that Project Kelly opens up Pandora's Box for us regarding some further future investments. I do believe that. But I will tell you this, and I've said it publicly, and I'm not, I'm not about to change my tune now, is that I think when you have a public funding with government, then I think there is, and I've said this, a shared responsibility. I think, you know, that we share certain expenditures with the county. I know the Aldermen understand that, I think it's fair game. But also, I guess it would be normal when Alderman Burden brought it up to, for people to say, "Well, you know, the city makes a certain amount of contribution, but yet that share, that shared cost, whatever it may be, is diminished at the other governmental body, taxing body. Is that fair?" Well, sure, it's fair. You know, that's in your face, and there's no getting around it. So, this isn't anything, I guess, that, you know, I'm talking about for the first time. I've made these observations before. There are some things I wasn't aware of, you know, that since I've been here a short period of time. It's been a year, I guess, coming up, hasn't it? Feels like 10. But, you know, there, there is some things that obviously I, I wasn't aware of. I wasn't aware of the historical, the history of Growth Dimensions. I was not aware of, actually, I wasn't even aware that until Ms. Hanson pointed it out to me, that, you know, there is a lease agreement with Growth Dimensions. How the office space was divided was way before me. And, but ultimately, I think it's a discussion that should be had here, and it should be a, it should be a decision that, you know, the council make based upon that, those discussions. So, you know, that's my, you know, you asked for my opinion, that's my opinion. I know that there was some discussion about the filings of nine, of a 990. I don't know what that is. I don't know if those are late, if they're not in order, if they are in order. I know that was one of the discussions I had written down. The other one I had written down was, you are five, Growth Dimensions is a 501(c)(6) status, so I guess with that, you wouldn't be eligible for any of the COVID relief money, is that right?
That's correct. They did change one of the criteria to 501(c)(6), the big grant, late in the game, but it was, that's if no entertainment and restaurants were receiving them, so we'd never get any dollars.
And not eligible?
Correct.
So, those are my observations. You know, I, like I said, I think, you know, obviously, whenever you bring in a project like what we had here tonight, and what I had chatted with the council prior, I think when you get that, those projects, it involves a certain amount of property tax revenue for the, for the city, but also for the county as well. And so whenever you think about that, I know I think about that, so. But I'm not telling anybody here, you know, their business. This is part of a debate, part of a discussion that we, we've had here tonight. We can continue to have it, and you can continue to ask me questions, and I'll be as forthright as I can.
No, so I guess my concern is, if something happened where Growth Dimensions went away, and we're making a $55,000 investment into Growth Dimensions to help them do what they're doing, I mean, technically, you would have to have somebody act as a liaison to do all of the things that Growth Dimensions does. And I doubt you'd be able to pay anybody a $55,000 salary a year to fill the gaps of what they do.
Yeah, like I said, I don't, I don't have the ability to do that. I'd already said that. I don't, I don't have the, you know, I don't have the staff, I don't have the expertise to do that. I think, you know, the discussion is, you know, it is what it is. There's certainly, I would never deprive anybody, and I think I made that point before, whenever you have council members and they feel that they want to discuss things about the budget, I wasn't trying to be disrespectful to Alderman Burden. If it would have been Alderwoman Flurry that had asked me the same, Alderwoman Brather that had asked me the same thing, I would have, I would have told you the same thing, you know, that you can, you can ask those questions, and I think they ought to be discussed. So, absolutely. It's all, it's all transparent here, and it should be. So, Alderman Porter?
Okay, so, correct me if I'm wrong on this, because I maybe not fully understanding this, but the way I'm seeing their budget, right now, they have a $20,000 in the, in the black here on, above what they need. Yeah, I don't believe in the, kind of like Alderman Burton, the monkey see, monkey do type of thing, you know, where we, just because the county cut that we should cut. But what I'm thinking here is, I wonder if we should consider cutting the $20,000 down off the 55, which would make a $35,000 investment with the city, since they're, they have a 25, or it looks like a $20,000 in the black here, and maybe consider that. Am I, am I wrong about this, or?
Yes, we're minus $20,315 in this year's budget that we are taking from reserves.
Shortfall.
That's a shortfall. So that's, that's with, that's with the full investment of the county, or the previous investment of the county and the city. So this would actually even bring us further.
Okay, then I was looking at it wrong. I thought that was a, actually, in the, in the red, in the black, not in the, in a shortfall.
And I'd also recommend that the council member, if you are discussing cuts, I'm not even sure what the budget amount right now is, if it's, I think, $55,000. They pay us back $6,000 every year for their rent, so it's then really $49,000, but just so you're aware of that.
Alderman Flurry.
Right, so I know that we're always trying to make sure that our budget is as lean as possible, but I guess, Pam, the question would be, is if we cut $10,000, $15,000, whatever the amount we come up with, what kind of message does that send to other investors and people that are looking at Belvedere that, you kind of mentioned earlier, but as we're looking at the public sector, what is that kind of, kind of confidence is that put into future investors?
Yeah, and, and I've had this conversation and comments from some that are investors and some that aren't, had said, "We're investing in Belvedere, and if you're not in Boone County, and if you're not investing into economic development," they see it as you're not investing into businesses, you're not investing into the growth of the community. And that's what economic development is. It's really, it's, it's not always, we're not seeing the return always immediately. We see it for us, for our children, for the grandchildren. It's, sometimes the, these investments are long, and sometimes they're short. We're very fortunate that this is, there's, we're gonna see a lot of growth this year, a lot of investment, there's a lot of projects. And I just think that it sends the wrong, makes it my job more difficult to bring businesses here. So, and you're right, I think it does send like a message that they don't feel that the public sector is, is a team with them, a partnership. And that's what we always pride ourselves on, is partnership in our community. We've been great partners with public-private organizations together to bring companies here and to keep them here.
Thank you. So, all right, so, I mean, if I understand correctly, the, the plan here is what economic development, economic growth is, we're trying to attract more people here to the city, and by attracting more people here, we're growing our tax revenue, which increases what we can spend on, not only with paying the Growth Dimensions budget, but being able to provide, you know, radios to the firefighters, or police cars, or fixing wells, and all these other things. All these things that, instead of having to be this long-term capital budget, is, can be taken care of in the budget right away. Instead of having to prolong a project, we can do that more quickly by having more tax revenue.
Correct. Thank you.
Is that it? Is that it?
That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Stone?
And this might be too pronged, maybe Kip can align to this, but generally speaking, a lot of our industrial development and distribution centers is pretty much directly related to the progress that Growth Dimensions has done over the years, of which, I'm guessing a lot of build-out and permitting is done, when we're talking about $3 million worth of improvements this past month, that some of that is on the commercial end, and some of that is for stuff that would have not otherwise been here if the business hadn't shown up?
Well, here's my list. We're in competition with other communities in the area with a legitimate area of I-88, I-39, you got Business 20. Part of Pam's job is to compete with those other communities, because we don't have the staff to do it. If they come to me, they're, they're put on the back burner. I got enough crap going on. Gina's got enough stuff going on, Brent's got enough stuff going on. We don't have the staff here to, to compete with other communities for big development, like General Mills, the Fortune 500s. This is what communities are striving for. This is where your commercial and your retail comes from. There's, there's not that many of them out there. They want to come here, they're waiting for the price of the land to drop, to where they can afford it. Or a grandma's restaurant goes belly up. There's a lot that's available. There's people that want it. They wanted the car wash.
But they're, they're out there looking all the time. They're just waiting to, but you gotta have a staff member, or a staff of city employees that...
Can handle when those calls come in. We, I can't field them. My staff isn't qualified to field them. You got a qualified person right here and a qualified staff that handles all this stuff. That's, that's the bottom line about all this. And if it's $55,000, come on, guys. You're, most of the highest-paid people in a, in a city, staff, other than the city attorney, if they have one, is the economic development director. So, you're getting off cheap. This is ridiculous, in my opinion, but I'm sorry. Hopefully I answered your question.
The one comment that Kip made, and I just want to point it out, was a lot of communities have staff in-house that do community development. In addition to their, what's called, Growth Dimensions was called EDC, Economic Development Corporation. Most counties in the state of Illinois, most counties across the United States, have an EDC that fulfills a part of what Growth Dimensions does. In addition, they usually have an in-house staff, and I'm not talking small towns like Papa Grove, but once you get to be about the size of Belvedere, Belvedere, Freeport, Sycamore, I think Rochelle had an economic development person in-house, Crystal Lake, Lake in the Hills, they have either a dedicated economic development person or a city manager with that background. We have neither, to do the work that Growth Dimensions does for the city and the county. And in fact, if you look at a lot of the counties, especially if you go into the collar counties, not just all the cities have an in-house person, the county does as well, along with their continuing staff. I'm not talking the funding level, I'm talking about the necessity for an organization like Growth Dimensions. You, if you'd asked me this 20 years ago when I started here, or 19 years ago, I kind of said, "Who's Growth Dimensions, what are they doing?" I, I didn't have the understanding I have of them now. I was familiar with EDCs, but they were over at the old post office building and doing their own thing, really didn't see what they were doing. It wasn't until we had some big projects come in with Chrysler and Magna, and my first big one was the NDK process, project. I mean, that was a huge Growth Dimensions win way back in the day. And yeah, it went belly up, no fault of the city or the county or Growth Dimensions. The entity is essential. The only question is, how do you fund it?
All right, Gina, I'll get to you. Alderman, Alderman Burden, I saw your hand up first, yeah?
Thanks, appreciate it again, Mayor. Yeah, just so we're clear here, so I'm not proposing to completely eliminate Growth Dimensions at this time, doing the same thing the county did, and I feel like they beat us to the punch, and we should have done it first, and now we're playing catch-up. And you mentioned a message to the investors, what about a message to the taxpayers? And it is ridiculous, it's too much money, they have enough money in the reserves, the county, these are competent people that represent us, and they voted to cut it. Thank you.
Kip? Alderman Porter?
Well, you say you're not proposing to eliminate Growth Dimensions, this is for Alderman Burden, but in a way, it sounds like you are, if you're talking about cutting it that much. I mean, I agree, maybe we need to cut it down a little bit, but if we cut to $15,000, like the county did, that sounds like it pretty much would eliminate them.
Okay, thank you. Alderwoman Moho?
I think the development that our economic development brings to Belvedere broadens our tax base, which is a true benefit to all the taxpayers. The more money we have coming in from all these developments helps the taxpayers greatly.
Thank you. Who did I miss?
Gina?
Gina? Hi Gina.
Sorry, I just wanted to clarify some misinformation from Alderman Burden. When I spoke about Dairy Queen coming, I never said Growth mentions was not involved with that.
Somebody else had told me that today, so I apologize.
100% incorrect.
Good for them.
So, when I worked, so, it kind of brought, came up during that next site discussions, Growth Mentions works on one end of the spectrum, I work on, you know, they kind of like lure them to Belvedere, and then I wrap it up at the Pretty Bow during the zoning cases. So, a lot of times, Pam's working in the background for a year, year and a half before it even gets to me. I mean, these are not overnight things. But when people call asking questions, "What's this property zoned, is this land use allowed?" After they clarify zoning, the very next thing out of their mouth is always, "Are there any financial incentives? Does the city have any programs to help pay for this? They only have a certain budget." A lot of times, they also, like I said, there is a restaurant going next to Applebee's, can't say which one it is, because they haven't told where they're renting from that they're leaving yet.
Which one is it?
So, you know, like, we can't just give out names and stuff like that. So I just, I feel bad for Pam when she gets beat up on that, because I get the same deal with my zoning cases. They come in, I, I go over applications, meet with them a few times, and I tell you guys, "I met with developers," because we're not allowed to say. But Pam is usually involved in every one of my zoning cases. She's the one that gets them set up, gets them set, and then I take over. So there's definitely interaction, and then just my personal opinion, as a taxpayer in this community, the more things we have in the community, the higher the EAV. The higher the EAV, the less individuals have to pay in taxes. So it is a benefit. And as someone that worked for the county for 11 years, I have a pretty good understanding of how the county thinks about things, and whatever the city does increases the county's EAV. So for many years, it's always been the city can pay, because whatever the city does, the county benefits. So they're in the position to be able to cut funding and cut services, because the city can still float that. The city, if the city had that mentality and said, "Oh, the county can pay for it, we don't have to worry about it," there's a 50% chance the city won't benefit at all, because it could be anywhere else in the county. So, we can't mirror the county, because we're in a different position than they are when it comes to shared entities like Growth Dimensions. That's my personal opinion as a taxpayer. opinion as a taxpayer.
Okay. Thank you, Gina. Alderman Burden?
Thanks again, Mayor. So I'm just going to, where are the results? Point to the results. Show me a business. Show me something good. Not a place you can't even remember the name of.
So I'll be glad to give you some information. You know, like I said, you're, I'm trying to be as prepared as I possibly can. I come here every month, sharing results and information, and sharing a story. I try to do that with as much as possible. My door is always open. If you want to hear more, I can pull that all together. But if you see, you know, the Shake Place, we work with them, coming in on State Street, down the street from you. We've, you know, worked with a, you know, insurance company coming in on this side. We've worked with the restaurant down the street here, the Mexican restaurant. We've worked with, you know, if you want, those were all successes.
So you worked with them, or you brought them here? That, that's, that's what people are looking for. When people talk about this economic development that's so great for the community, where is it? Where is it? I don't see it.
Well, I will tell you this, that, you know, we're probably not, we're probably going to beat a dead horse here this evening, but it would be appropriate, I think Shannon, Ms. Hanson has, did you hand, hand those out, Ms. Hanson? Okay. So in regards to any amendments that may be made in the future, I know she had a request. She wanted to share that with the council. I would also ask then, if Pam, if you could bring back, I know sometimes I can't even get the name of an individual right up here, so, you know, if you're asking, if they're asking for successes, I know it's, I'm sure you would want to come back and, and bring those, reach out to Alderman Burden, or bring it back.
I'll be glad to.
At a time. And so Ms. Hanson has handed out any changes, a letter, makes requests for any amendments that come up when, at the proper time for the budget? Did you have any other comment, Ms. Hanson?
No, just pointing out that what you have are a couple of, just reminders that it does need to be in motion form after the second reading, and actually giving wording for the motions if, if you choose to make them.
Okay. Mr. Anderson?
Just one final comment on, on economic development for Belvedere. And I think it's, it's, I guess, to point out that we have a lot of longtime, or have had a lot of longtime proprietors, landowners, in and around our immediate city limits, and that kind of has hand-strung us to a point for development. There's lots of potential that's always been there, but due to the, the, I guess, the long-term ownership of those properties, they weren't necessarily developable. That has changed. A lot of those properties have now switched and transferred. And I think some of this development that you're seeing now is a result of that, which I think the economic development end of that is going to be that much more important, because for a lot of areas that weren't necessarily in play before, now are available for development. And there's going to be, as we see several now that are coming forward, there's going to be probably two more large developments, one on either end of town, that's going to be coming forward to you for consideration here soon, besides the General Mills one. And I think going forward, you're going to see more opportunities available. And again, if, if Growth Dimensions isn't in place, or it's reduced, then that reduction, or to make up that difference, is going to have to be made up somewhere.
Alderman Prather?
I just want to say, I really appreciate everybody's honest input tonight, as far as from a staff level. You know, it's hard to sit here and make some of these decisions, not knowing how that really impacts all of you. And I just appreciate your, your openness tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will say that many times I get phone calls during the day, and it's always, and I'm sure the reporters may hear this, but it is about, you know, what have you done? What has happened lately regarding some of the reductions that we've had, particularly at Stellantis? And it seems like, you know, it, we don't get a lot of good coverage. For instance, this project is, Project Kelly is a big deal. It is a huge opportunity for the city and the county to have, you know, jobs come into the community, a chance for property tax revenue that we've never had, that we just, we don't have it. But mainly, what it does is it gives us a, a future of investment. We were able to have, by getting the water and sewer out here to properties that are going to be newly annexed, or potentially that want to do business here with the city, whether it be to the west of the development at General Mills, or whether it be to the south at the investment that the city and county has already made at the interchange. It's a, it's a changer. And unfortunately, I don't think those get talked about, or those, those don't get as many kudos, or they seem to get lost up in the shuffle of what seems to be, you know, people that are more interested in a pending gloom. But that isn't how I feel about it. I think, I think we're going to do well on, I think we have done well on this one. I think we're going to continue to do well with our economic development. And, you know, I'm optimistic about Stellantis, so a good note. Maybe we'll keep that in mind. Anyhow, any-
Mayor, make one more comment?
Sure.
I want to say thank you very much. I do, you know, do appreciate your investment over the past years. Those resources, we are, I'm very frugal about where every dollar goes. We do not take that lightly, where it comes from, whether or not it comes from a business or the public sector or a taxpayer. It doesn't matter. To me, those are our responsibilities, so we do, don't take that lightly, where we spend them, how we spend them. So I, you know, I think we've done, been good managers of that budget, and we'll try to continue to do that. And I also just want to remind you that it's not just about sales. Economic development is so much more. It's infrastructure, it's roads, it's, you know, it's workforce. There's so much that goes into it. And it's really, unless you're spending the day side by side, it's really difficult to understand what economic development really means. And, but I, I appreciate your time. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. And thank you to the council. Is there anything else that anybody has to say before we take a motion to, before we take a motion to adjourn? Hearing none? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Do we have an executive session?
No, I'm sorry. No, we don't, we don't have any, we don't, we don't have any executive session tonight, but thank you for asking. We'll, we'll strike that one. How's that? With that being said, could I get a motion to adjourn, please? Motion by Alderwoman Prather, second by Alderman Stevens. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? For the record, we adjourned the meeting at 9:37. Thank you, everybody, for your patience.